Good evening, good evening. The time is 6 o'clock PM. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. Buenos dias, benvenido a esta reunion del ayuntamiento de Pontiac. Welcome to this evening's Pontiac City Council meeting. For this evening's invocation, please join me now. Dear Lord, let us come together this evening to tackle issues confronting our community and to strengthen our beloved city. We may disagree on a particular issue or decision, but there is much that we can all agree upon. We all call Pontiac home, we all love our community, and we're all committed to making Pontiac a better place. May we move with purpose and find common ground to advance solutions for Pontiac's problems, especially in this season of renewal and rebirth. Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We remember those who our community has lost in recent days. Sylvester Agayo, Juan Armendares, Lena Jean Edgar, Veronica Ford, Josephine Hall Clancy, George Humphries, Dorothy Jones Lamott, Ronald Keen, Thomas McCanney, James Millis, Eddie Charles Peters Sr., and David Schlick, who worked at Pontiac Motors for over 55 years. Please also lift up the names for yourselves, for people in your family or your neighborhoods who we've lost as well, as we now convene a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You, of course, may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All members present and voting, is there a, we have a quorum being established? Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington, to adopt this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda, to add resolutions establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Webster Community Center located at 640 Huron Street, and similarly, the resolution for the exemption certificate for the same property, adding that as a resolution, it would become the new 9 and 10, and the numbers correspondingly would move down as a result? Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman. Any discussion on that motion to amend the agenda? The administration had provided that to us, and so the public hearings were previously established. This just allows us, as the council, to debate and/or act, if it's the council's pleasure. Hearing no discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call on the amendment to the agenda adding those two resolutions. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We're now at the main motion, adoption of the agenda as amended. Are there any other amendments, questions, discussion? Speakers list having been exhausted, we are now at approval of the motion before us, adoption of the agenda as amended. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yep.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Nicholson, not a debatable motion. Is there, roll call now, Clerk Doyle on adoption of the consent agenda.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Nicholson, not a debatable motion. Is there, roll call now, Clerk Doyle on adoption of the consent agenda.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All members present and voting, is there a, we have a quorum being established? Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington, to adopt this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda, to add resolutions establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Webster Community Center located at 640 Huron Street, and similarly, the resolution for the exemption certificate for the same property, adding that as a resolution, it would become the new 9 and 10, and the numbers correspondingly would move down as a result? Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman. Any discussion on that motion to amend the agenda? The administration had provided that to us, and so the public hearings were previously established. This just allows us, as the council, to debate and/or act, if it's the council's pleasure. Hearing no discussion, speaker's list exhausted. Roll call on the amendment to the agenda adding those two resolutions. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We're now at the main motion, adoption of the agenda as amended. Are there any other amendments, questions, discussion? Speaker's list having been exhausted, we are now at approval of the motion before us, adoption of the agenda as amended. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yep.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Nicholson, not a debatable motion. Is there, roll call now, Clerk Doyle on adoption of the consent agenda.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
All right, we are now at recognition of elected officials, seeing none that are requesting attention. Now we are at agenda address, two-minute time limit to speak to specific items on the agenda. We give the floor now to President Protam Carrington on agenda address.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Quincy Stewart. I wasn't quite aware, I noticed on the agenda something about body cams for the Sheriff's Department. I'm not, I know you can't respond back, but I'm assuming that you're voting so they can have body cams on them? Okay, I'm all for it. Mr. Bill Maxi. Mr. Fred Moran.
It's Freddie Moran.
Okay.
I am the president of La Vistal. We are having a Cinco de Mayo, May the 7th, at the Ruth Peterson Center. Came to welcome everybody to come. The tickets are $7. I do have tickets on me. There will be music and refreshments and sold and everything. So we haven't had a celebration like this in quite a while in Pontiac. So I and my members of La Vistal plan on having this celebration for our community to come out and support us and have a good time with us. If you want any more information, I could give you my number. My number is 248-242-1386. If anybody would like to have some tickets, I do have them with on me. So if you many would like to have some, please let me know. Thank you.
Please, please forgive me.
Excuse me, can I pass these out?
No objection.
No objection. And also, I'd like an apology to the crowd tonight because I made a mistake and called him at, at agenda address, so I want to make sure this community know that was my mistake. But he did sign up for public comment. Thank you. Veronica, is it Veronica, I'm sorry, Taylor? Okay.
Good evening, council, mayor, and the city of Pontiac. I'm here speaking on Micah 6. This have been a beautiful place for Micah 6 to be able to bring to the city of Pontiac because they've been helping feed this city and other cities across the state of Michigan through a program that the state rep, Brenda Carter, and the governor took up. And they say with him having the, the school over there that got burned up and everything, this man is doing marvelous work in the city of Pontiac. He's trying to bring back this city and upgrade this city and help regardless of race, creed or color. We need to start working with our people that's working for the best of our city. Thank you.
Jennifer, is it Jennifer Bruce? Or Burke?
I want to also address the agenda item for, and I guess I don't know if I should do public hearing, wait for the public hearing, or now? It's about the Webster Project.
You can do now.
Okay.
It's on the agenda, feel free.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. In the past, Pontiac seems to be a community that offers a lot of complaints. We look for reasons to stop progress and reasons to stop entities and other businesses from coming into the city. We, we look at empty buildings, the additional damage that's caused as they remain empty, the increased cost of renovations. When we're talking about Webster School, we are also looking at the possibility of a version of a youth center. We're looking at Oprah, which allows us to have enforcement and oversight of this, this progress when Webster is moving forward. We are also going to have services that benefit a huge population in, in the city of Pontiac. It's not going to be everything to all people, but it's an amazing start to start bringing this community together. Instead of being a complaint-driven city that looks at blight and crime and empty and abandoned buildings, let's look at the fact that over $1 million has been raised in efforts to renovate Webster. This will help us attract businesses. It will give the Huron Corridor a much more appealing look. It's also going to help other investors look at this return on investment, and maybe we can then take that to Emerson School and some of the other buildings within the city. So I just hope that we can, we can move forward with Webster Project and, excuse me, and the Oprah certification that's been requested.
All right, thank you. Jose is, I can't pronounce the last name. Ebarra.
Thank you for your time. Just got a couple of quick things. I'm in favor of the Micah 6 project, but I'm also, would like some stipulations with that project so that we don't wind up with another Emerson School. Emerson School is still sitting the same. There has to be some stipulation so that we can have a positive reflection of this city. Also, I'd like to remind you, each and every one of you, that time is our most precious commodity. So many times, I've gone back and I've looked at some of the council meetings, and to be honest with you, I was a little disappointed with some of you mansplaining your questions to the public. Learn how to get asked direct questions. Time is precious. There's no reason for some of the elderly that are here to be here past 9 o'clock. And I'm not, I'm not admonishing anyone in particular, I'm just saying that as a whole, we need to move forward, and we need to move forward in a positive and precise manner. Because you may think you have time, but you don't have time. Your term will be up before you know it. Don't waste your time mansplaining your questions to us. Ask direct questions, get direct answers, and move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ashlyn Altman, or Altman.
Hi. I'm Ashley Altman. Some of y'all might recognize me, I've been around. I'm here to say that I also support this project at Micah 6. Let's see, have some notes that I don't think are going to fit the two minutes, I thought it was three. Full disclosure, my business is slated to be a tenant there, but I would support this project no matter what. I supported it before I was lucky enough to be involved, and I would support it were I not, and I would support more of these projects throughout our community. I have a little report, I, sorry, I only have one because I didn't get to my office to use our facility printer, so we don't, we're running out of ink. So one of you can have this. It is why activity centers are the building blocks of inclusive regional economies. And it says that leaders need to identify and invest in what we refer to as activity centers, places within regions where a diversity of economic, physical, social, and civic assets cluster clearly defined, at a clearly defined hyper-local scale. So this project meets that criteria handsomely. It goes on to say that we need to build with a benchmark of hyper-locality, a 15-minute city with close access to parks, open space, public transport, retail options, affordable mixed-income housing, fresh food for more people in more neighborhoods, blah, 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 blah. Basically, they say y'all should invest in this project, and that the small ask they're requesting is not a big price to pay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Carrie Morse.
Good evening, council members. My name's Carrie Morse. I live on Cadillac Street. When I moved to Pontiac, I wanted to live in the neighborhood where Micah 6 is, but I couldn't find a place that would allow a dog. I got involved with Micah 6 in 2018 when I brought a group of volunteers to do work at the house on Newberry Street. When I learned the full scope of what Micah 6 was doing and was planning to do, I was all in. The two things that really blew my mind about Micah 6 was first, when they moved to the neighborhood, they didn't come in and say, "This is what you all need." They spent a year listening and talking to people and finding out what their neighbors needed, and then acted accordingly. The other thing, as someone with extensive knowledge of nonprofits in the Detroit area, that's amazing about Micah 6, is that the people who work for Micah 6 live in the neighborhood. So when they talk about serving their neighbors, they literally are serving their neighbors. It's impossible to quantify the value that Webster Community Center will bring to the community. It will be a beacon of all the things that are wonderful about our city. It is vital, and this project absolutely needs to move forward. As you will hear, there are several funding opportunities that will not be available to Micah 6 unless the tax abatement happens. It will be viewed as a contribution from the city to the Micah 6 Webster Community Center project. So it is vital that that tax abatement happens and gives them the opportunity to seek those fundies, funding streams that will keep the project moving forward. I encourage you all to vote in favor of the tax abatement. There are not taxes being collected on Webster now, so it will become a tax revenue stream with what they are willing to pay. They're meeting you halfway. So please, please vote to help keep this incredible project moving forward.
Thank you. Is it, is it Andre Jones?
As the lady said, that when he came here, I didn't see no one, I've been here all my life, I see no one doing anything for the community. When I met him, he wasn't married, he had no kids, and he was in the neighborhood. I didn't know him from Adams. And one thing I can say, he changed my life, I don't know, you know, I see him changing the community, but he changed mine for sure. That's my best friend. I support him with 100% all the way. And I have guys that I, I wasn't a good guy. I ran the streets of Pontiac, did my little dirt, and now it's time for me to give back. And by me giving back, that means spearheading, cleaning our neighborhoods, the violence, all that's, I don't, we don't want that. We don't want that anymore in the city of Pontiac. Right? We sit in the middle of all the outskirts of Auburn Hills, we sit dead in the middle. So that means that if a tree grow in the middle, and everybody's around it, and it's a beautiful tree, they're going to flourish to that tree that's beautiful. And that's what Pontiac is. I haven't had no problems out of Micah 6. Like she said, they walk the community, they talk to people, they talk to the people that's in the neighborhood they live in. That's a big, that's a big plus. It's people living in Pontiac all their life and having did, picked up a piece of paper. You hear me? Picked up a piece of paper to try to bring the community back. I have two agendas to address. He have the school over there on Emerson School. I go, I take care of most of his properties. I go over there every day. Now, I know that there's people that live there. If you see someone dumping over there, call the police. He ain't dumping it. It's the people that y'all out, that, if that's, if that's your community, and you live across from that school, and you see someone backing something up there, call the police.
Sir, that does conclude your time.
He calling, complaining about him, make him look like bad. And then I have another one, it's like...
I'm sorry, sir, that does conclude your time.
Three minutes?
Well, thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure the Micah 6 project would certainly be an improvement of the Huron Corridor, which is one of the chief projects of the redevelopment ready certification. I understand the Planning Commission is leading us in this year, but also, I came to talk particularly and to read our visitors from Endop about another legacy project in the city, and that's the Woodward Avenue Loop Conversion, which would be a wonderful transformation of our city for many reasons. We've been waiting this for a while. I understand you moved the time back to 2025, but that gives us plenty of time to prepare, including to raise, to raise our matching funds. I'm interested in having the community be reminded about what this project will bring. There are many people who supported the bringing this project. I also send greetings to Mr. Adjiba, your director, who personally put down his support behind this. He wanted to get the city to support it, and so I went out and got a lot of the businesses who wrote letters of support for this project. He did, I did take him to our council, the council before you, not you, this is the 11th council, to try to get a letter of support, but they were more interested in the Perry Street Diet, which was part of the complete street. So we never got that, but I, on the behalf, I thought this was a great thing for the city. I went ahead and signed the letter of support, and on that goodwill, Mr. Adjiba decided to go ahead and put that on his funding schedule. So I passed that on, a legacy project to you to take care of and to go forward. And I would just like to read a couple statements that I made in the letter of support for the city. And when I talk about legacy projects, I'm talking about the things that we established, and now you are taking in your hands to carry forward. That includes the retiree health to our retirees, that includes making Pontiac a destination city again, that includes establishing a youth center, that includes the Phoenix Center settlement. But the Woodward Loop Conversion proposal will have a meaningful and sustainable impact on Pontiac, consistent with the Pontiac Economic Recovery Plan entitled Pontiac Moving Forward. So I look forward to hearing more about you. Welcome back to Pontiac, and we're looking forward to this transformational project, which will help to enliven our city.
Thank you. Evan, is it Monahan?
Yeah. Good evening. As he said, my name is Evan Monahan. I've been a resident of Pontiac since about 2010, and I am speaking tonight to support the Wisner School Project, Webster School Project. Too many of them, too many of them. Yeah. So I'm also the co-owner of Plantin Fancy Food with Ashley, who spoke a little bit earlier, and I've served on the Board of the Oakland County Pioneer and Historical Society for several years. This project and this building have been an important place in the neighborhood and the city in overall. While it has sat vacant since 2006, this Webster School served several generations of students and families since it was constructed in 1920. The Historical Society was proud to support Webster School's addition to the National Register of Historic Places this past January. In addition to its impressive architecture, it is one of the few remaining sites that was a focus of a lawsuit filed in the school district in the 1960s addressing racial segregation in the district. So by repairing the property and updating it for the future, we can actually, you know, preserve its history as well, because it's, I mean, it's a great old building from the 1920s. So, yeah, I just hope that you guys will support this, and we can make the community center.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper.
I'm sorry, guys, about this, but I want you to see what's going on.
Oh, is this the item on the agenda, sir?
It is, it's item number two. It's called the Woodward Loop.
Okay, thank you.
So most people don't realize that 1965, the master plan for the city of Pontiac incorporated higher kilowatts, because they had a little city design they were going to do. 1980 is when GM came in and did Ottawa Towers and the Phoenix Center with a deal with the city. All your power comes through the center of the loop, all your wiring, all your plumbing. Recently, a few years back, you had a huge flooding. So there's a big development that has to go on here, and you have to connect the road for the two-way part. Well, guess what? The northern part of the parking structure in the Phoenix Center has all the wiring ripped out, all the plumbing ripped out. This is what's causing your shorting all the way around. That's why my wife almost died. But in order to make that happen, you're going to have to demolish the north end. You, the city, are responsible for that according to the parking lease. Any improvements? That's $6 to $10 million, okay? We haven't even talked about completing the road. We haven't talked about moving the electrical or plumbing or anything else. So you might want to look at that before you decide to do the Woodward Loop. So all your kilowatts come through higher, it was designed for a hotel, it was designed for it to be a community center for the whole city of Pontiac. That's what the loop was for, to keep civilians safe because of the traffic that goes through here, with the inner city of, you're in the center of four or five different cities. So everybody comes through Huron and M59, and takes it up north. That electrical, that's what happened to my wife. One second later, she had been totaled, killed, instead of the car looked totaled. That isn't her hitting somebody, that's somebody swiping her. That electrical? That's what happened to my wife. One second later, she'd been totaled, killed, instead of the car looked totaled. That isn't her hitting somebody, that's somebody swiping her at 45 miles an hour through Huron and the lights went out. This is the kind of stuff that you need to deal with right now and the city is responsible for all of it and I want you all to be aware of that. And you've signed the deal without making sure what was happening in the legal contracts. So please look at it. Mrs. Waterman pushed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President McGinnis, that concludes, uh, agenda address.
Thank you, President Proten. We are now at, uh, the one discussion item, uh, this evening, cleaning up our Pontiac neighborhoods together. At the bottom of your agendas, you'll notice that there's multiple communications announcing different services and cleanup activities. So, uh, those, uh, that information is there for you. We've talked about this multiple times, uh, in recent council meetings, so for the sake of time, I'm not, uh, advocating that we launch in depth, uh, but just to say that strategically as a city, uh, we recognize as people that live here too, bless you, bless you, uh, that, uh, there is a great deal of spring cleaning needed in all parts of our city, from the, the streets to the, the vacant lots, uh, to the corridors and, and signature properties, uh, there is a lot of work to be done. And so the mayor and city council are going to spend a lot of time strategizing for when we're dialing up with this current budget process for how we can have just stronger ability to tackle this, because right now there's a real capacity issue with tackling, uh, issues from the, the curbs, uh, the right-of-ways properties. We need stronger code enforcement, uh, stronger right-of-way enforcement, uh, stronger cleanup and collection in all corners of our city. I'm hearing from you, so I know you see it, um, but I just wanted to very briefly orient that because as we are coming out of this ascent, eventually snow thawing, uh, it's, it's becoming very apparent for all of us. Uh, did anyone else want to speak about cleaning up our Pontiac neighborhoods together, which is a strong priority that we all have? All right. With that, just, um, the communications at the end of the agenda announce for you some different free landfill days, um, household hazardous waste, other items that can help us all work together to clean our neighborhoods. With that, we are at the special presentation, the Michigan Department of Transportation Woodward Loop Reconfiguration Project, and I give the floor now to the mayor and administration to queue up our guests.
Thank you very much, President McGinnis. Uh, it is great to have, uh, this team from MDOT with us today. I want to thank them for taking time to be here to make sure that they're, uh, keeping city council in the loop. The deputy mayor and I, uh, had the opportunity, uh, along with our DPW folks to sit down with, uh, the MDOT team and talk about some of the details about the Woodward Loop conversion, and we wanted to make sure that that information was being shared both with city council and with the entire community. Uh, this will be an ongoing process of trying to make sure that we here at City Hall are doing a better job of keeping the community in the loop, keeping the community apprised of, uh, the city's plans in general, but especially when it comes to infrastructure improvements. Uh, I know that the community's been talking, uh, with anticipation for some time about the Woodward Loop, uh, but the goals of the Woodward Loop Reconstruction are pretty simple and straightforward. It's about trying to make sure that we have a more pedestrian-friendly downtown where Woodward is not a five-lane superhighway that divides downtown from neighborhoods, but is rather a more pedestrian-scale, uh, road that allows for easier pedestrian crossings. That's number one. Number two, that it's easier for drivers to navigate. One-way streets tend to be very confusing to drivers who are not familiar with, uh, community, uh, and by converting the Woodward Loop to a two-way street and hopefully some of the other downtown streets to two-way streets at the same time, we hope to make sure that downtown as a whole is easier to navigate for visitors so that as we get back to having signature events downtown, not just for Pontiac residents to attend, but hopefully that will attract, uh, folks from throughout southeast Michigan to come to Pontiac and spend their hard-earned dollars supporting Pontiac businesses, Pontiac employees, and Pontiac residents and our tax base. Uh, making sure that the Woodward Loop is reconfigured as part of an initiative to make it easier for everybody to navigate downtown, uh, will help advance economic redevelopment and the quality of life for downtown, uh, residents and all of Pontiac's residents alike. So without further ado, I wanna turn, uh, the, the podium over to the MDOT official so that they can get into all the details about the project, but this has been in the works for many, many years, going back 15 or 20 years now, uh, and it's nice to at least see some light at the end of the tunnel here, but, uh, nothing about this is set in stone, so we continue to, to welcome input and feedback from city council and from the community, uh, as we finalize certain details of this moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor Grammell. Uh, good evening. I'm Veronica Lamb, project manager with Michigan Department of Transportation, and I'm here to discuss with you the Woodward Loop Two-Way Conversion Project. So with me today is Kim Webb, our Metro Region Engineer, Lori Swanson, the Oakland Transportation Service Center Manager, and David Hay with DLZ as our consultant project manager. I'm gonna give you a big, uh, brief background on the livability study that was completed by Oakland County in 2014, as well as the traffic study that was completed by MDOT in 2016, and how we got to the project we're designing today. Um, the project's planned for an October 2024 letting with construction going into 2025 and 2026. The loop portion of the project would be constructed in 2025 with, uh, the M-59 reconstruct being taken place in 2026. So as you may know, the Woodward Loop was constructed in 1964. Prior to its construction, the city of Pontiac had two major roads intersecting within the downtown. US 10, also known as Woodward, that became Saginaw Street and then turned into Dixie Highway further north, and Huron Street, also known as M-59. Prior to the freeway system being constructed, Woodward or US 10 had, um, was the main north-south road between Detroit and Flint. So Pontiac originally had a traditional downtown grid pattern, um, but there was quite a bit of traffic congestion that the city suffered from, hence the construction of the Woodward Loop you see today and on the image in front of you. Since the loop has been constructed, the city has seen various issues, a few of them being the barrier effect the loop creates, um, for the city to the surrounding neighborhoods and the greater community, as well as the loop being a three-to-six-lane wide section, depending on where you're at, making it very difficult for pedestrians to cross, as well as the negative economic impacts that have occurred from these difficulties over the So the purpose of the livability study that was completed in 2014 by Oakland County in coordination with the city as well as MDOT was to improve the connectivity between downtown Pontiac with its adjacent neighborhoods and the broader community. This study looked into the traffic data and saw the loop as a barrier, which I previously mentioned, and recommended that the best alternative to mitigate this issue was to convert the loop from its current one-way configuration to a two-way configuration. This would allow for some connectivity and accessibility to the central business district and to the surrounding neighborhoods, rid of that barrier effect of the loop and create streets that allow for traffic calming, as well as encourage more economic development within the city. Park Avenue, which is the eastern portion of the loop, would be seen as a more local roadway with two, um, northbound lanes and one southbound lane, and the west, um, side of the loop still being the five-lane section acting more as a thoroughfare. So MDOT completed our traffic study for the Woodward Loop in 2016. The additional traffic study was done to collect newer traffic counts as the counts collected for the livability study were collected during an economic low point and the, uh, volumes of traffic were already exceeding the projected counts. This study looked at traffic was, was, looked at where traffic was coming into and exiting the loop and what lane requirements would be needed to handle the two-way conversion. This in-depth analysis allowed us to get a better understanding of the future operational needs of the roadway while also considering all users. Before you is a concept for the loop that was developed with the Oakland County Livability Study. As you can see and as mentioned previously, the east side of the loop or Park Avenue would be two lanes northbound and one lane southbound, um, with a turn lane for the majority, with the west out of the, west side of the loop remaining a five-lane section. The livability study also recommended an on-street cycle track, which differs slightly from our current design, as we're going to be developing a non-motorized pathway within the entirety of the loop that will accommodate this bicycle traffic. The east side of the loop would be the more local route, as I previously discussed, with a lower speed limit of 30 miles per hour, and the western side of the loop would be, um, maintain two li, two lanes in each direction with a center-left turn lane and an intermittent median island with a speed limit of 35 miles an hour. So the results of our traffic study that was completed in 2016 were as follows. Um, Park Avenue would provide two northbound lanes and one southbound lane with a median lane for turning, adding median islands at various locations along the loop to provide mid-block crossings for pedestrians as well as to calm traffic, providing 12-foot lanes, increasing capacity at multiple intersections to improve the traffic operations, and modify the proposed on-street cycle track along Park Avenue to a non-motorized path inside the loop. So our overall goals and benefits of our project are to improve the downtown accessibility by converting the Woodward Loop and improving the pedestrian and non-motorized movements by adding a non-motorized path along the inside of the loop, connecting any missing sidewalk, and adding intermittent median islands to allow for refuge when crossing, which also provides opportunities for traffic calming. We would also be adding on-street parking at the northern portion of Park Ave and ensuring that the level of service, which is how all the intersections are operating, is acceptable at main intersections in this corridor. So before you is a rendering, um, near Whittamore Street on Woodward Ave on the western portion of the loop. This would give you an idea of, uh, what this section would look like post-construction. So, um, still having the five-lane section with median islands for pedestrian refuge and a non-motorized path. This next rendering is of Park Avenue or the eastern portion of the loop. Here again, you can see the non-motorized path and the median island and on-street parking. This will allow for this portion of roadway to have a more local feel and allow for traffic And finally, this rendering highlights Park Avenue south of Perry Street, two lanes northbound and one lane southbound with on-street parking and the non-motorized path at the inside of the loop. Before opening, um, up for questions, I wanted to give you a brief update on, uh, a project that we're going to be doing on Perry Street. So this would be, um, a pedestrian crossing project installed between Madison and Giddings near the Pontiac Middle School and the Oakland Technical School. Um, it's set to be built in 2023 and it would be installing a pedestrian crossing island with rectangular rapid flashing beacons to, um, signify that pedestrians were crossing to drivers. So with that, I open it up for any and all questions that you may have.
Uh, thank you. At this, um, councilwoman, uh, Melanie Rutherford.
How much of the community, um, involvement has been involved with the planning? I mean, like, did you do surveys? Do you have any statistics? Did you ask anybody opinion of this before you brought this to the city?
The project as a whole?
The project as a whole?
Yes.
And where is that data located?
Um, both Oakland County and when we were doing our, our study in.
I can't hear you. Cause you got some mic.
Um, when Oakland County did their study and then when we did our traffic study in 2016, there were, um, charrettes that were done. We came to the city and met with people and it was kind of like one of those where we like just mark up plans together, see what people wanted and that sort of thing. So that was year, you know, years ago. We've come before the city recently, um, I think it was right before COVID maybe, um, I can't remember the date, in the last year, two, couple of years? 2020, yeah. And, um, and, you know, to bring it back that, cause at that time we were just getting the funding and, um, to move forward, and so that's kind of how we've come about.
I have one more question.
Councilwoman Rutherford for follow-up.
Uh, what's the matching dollar amount that the city is, is, is required to pay, uh, towards this project?
So right now, um, the city is only required to pay their Act 51 participation.
What's the amount?
And that is, um, I don't know it off the top of my head. It's usually, it, we have an 80/20 split between, um, MDOT and the federal high, or, yeah, federal highway. And the Act 51 will be 2% of our 20%. So it ends up being, I think, um, less than a million dollars. But don't, I mean, we'll get that number to you. I'm not 100% sure. And that will fluctuate depending on, you know, the end price of the project. I think we're estimating around 25 million. So, um, but the other thing is, you know, with a big project like this, especially on M-59, where we are totally reconstructing M-59 from building face, basically to building face, we welcome, you know, the city to go after a TAP grant where there would be matching funds where if you wanted to do any aesthetic treatments, any kind of, uh, planner boxes or anything that would be above and beyond what MDOT would be putting back, we can partner, you can bring that, do it under our project where we absorb the maintaining traffic costs, you get cheaper prices and that sort of thing. And it makes M-59 kind of a showpiece for the city and, uh, you know, people coming into town. We could do decorative lighting, uh, tree line, you know, what, you know, the, whatever the city would like, and it will be, uh, have federal participation as well. So that's something that we would also, you know, entertain and, and encourage.
All right, thank you.
Other question. Councilman Nicholson.
Um, I, my question pertains to, uh, maintaining access in, uh, to downtown during this project. Um, I, I spend a lot of my time downtown, um, and we continue to have this sort of pendulum effect with, with what goes on where we start to get on the rise again, where we're just about to wrap up a lot of, uh, medical marijuana, uh, pieces that have held properties in lieu. Once that, you know, swells and now we've got new businesses moving into downtown, now we're going to have a huge, uh, you know, uh, construction project that will, I, I can't imagine not limit some access to our downtowns. Can you speak on the, the, the approach that you'll be taking to limit, uh, that, I mean, we have a lot of thriving businesses in our downtown we want to maintain?
Well, most of the loop work would be done under traffic where we would maintain. Um, now, M-59, David, you wanna talk about that? Cause we were talking about a full closure.
Yeah, so just to give everybody a little bit, little bit of an update of where the plan stage is right now. So, um, we just submitted 30% plans, which is called base plans. So the very, um, we're at the very early stages of plan development. So with that submittal, um, we were tasked with submitting maintenance of traffic concepts for, during construction. How are we gonna handle getting traffic around town during construction? So we put together two different concepts. Those are gonna be vetted out with MDOT and the city. Um, in our upcoming meetings, we'll have separate MOT meetings to talk about that, what's gonna work best, but part of our goal with coming up with these concepts is to, obviously, you know, mobility is a big thing, mobility and safety, right? So one of our target goals is to keep delays under 10 minutes. If you have to reroute somewhere, your delay is gonna be under 10 minutes. And we were able to achieve that with the two concepts we put together. There's only a, a few different movements that even come close to the 10-minute threshold. So like I said, we're, we just submitted those plans, we're gonna, we're gonna vet, vet them out and maybe make some adjustments here and there, but like I said, we're still in the early stages of that.
Councilman Nicholson.
Thanks. My request is to administration, can, um, that meeting, when it does come up, be held in concert with Main Street Pontiac? So there's, they're, they, they talked about having, uh, meetings with, between the city and MDOT with that rerouting opportunity for downtown traffic.
You just wanna make sure that Main Street Pontiac is included.
I think that the downtown business owner should be invited to that meeting just to give the impact feedback, and as you know, it's not an incredible, uh, you know, amount of people. I think we could all, you know, give some good insight to how people access our buildings and especially our downtown with the constraints and, and I mean, people access my business through alleyways most of the time, so I wanna make sure that those perspectives are seen because it's not as traditional as some, some others.
Totally agree. And so we'll reach out to Main Street Pontiac and make sure that they're part of facilitating some of these public hearings and, and these sessions that are designed to make sure that everybody in the community, uh, including but not limited to downtown businesses are aware of what's going on and what to expect.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add to that, like, throughout the design, we'll be holding other public meetings and, um, along the way, we like to engage, um, a lot of stakeholders, you know, fire, EMS, uh, the Downtown Development Authority, you know, different avenues. So your business district folks, you know, we're happy to incorporate them. Now, um, so we take those comments back and they get worked into our project plans.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Goodman.
So with the undertaking of this project, um, will there be any increased congestion in and around downtown? Obviously not when it's being. Obviously not when it's being done, because of course there will be, but in the time after the conversion, once it's finalized, what will be the impact on the surrounding areas' traffic after the conversion?
So with the conversion of the roadway from a one-way operation to a two-way operation, you're going to see an increase in delay just because of the addition of traffic and the different movements. With that, the intersections are going to be maintained at what we would call an acceptable level of service, which is how they're operating, the amount of time it's taking for everybody to move.
So I guess, and this is, if this is an answer that you can't give me, that's completely fine. Is there, are there any figures, I guess, that would, do you know what the increase in travel time would be, I guess, before the conversion and after? Like any, like would, do you know what the increase would be around?
I don't know, like the minutes of delay, no, I don't know those.
Okay, that's fine.
I have the- In that study that we did in 2016, excuse me, in that study that we did in 2016, we did compare existing to future with the change. So we can get that to you.
Okay, I would really appreciate that.
Sure.
And then another question that I have is, in, in doing this conversion and making it into a, a two-way street, will there be some sort of essentially road diet effect that happens with the, with the process of the conversion?
Not, not on the western portion of the Loop. So the western portion of the Loop is going to operate as that thoroughfare. You know, your north-south traffic, people are trying to get to and from. And then the eastern portion of the Loop, we're trying to give it a more local route, feel a little bit more safety for pedestrians and non-motorized traffic. So no, it wouldn't have that road diet effect on the western portion of the Loop.
Yeah, it, but it would obviously decrease some of the laneage, but-
It's, yeah, yeah, it's going to be a five-lane section, but it's not going to be five lanes of traffic in one direction anymore. Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, ladies, for coming, and I certainly appreciate the, the layout that you gave. But the gentleman before you mentioned something regarding the electrical grid. Did you guys consider that when you did your study?
Well, as far as the Loop conversion, we're doing all very superficial work. We're not replacing the pavement. We're doing intersection modifications. So there's very limited utility replacements or anything like that for the Loop. However, since M59 is going to be a complete replacement, we will be upgrading the underground utilities through that. So we do a ton of utility coordination with DTE, with AT&amp;T, with everybody and their brother that's in, under that pavement, all the sewers, water main, everything, that's the time to upgrade all of those services. So we do all of that while we do a reconstruct project.
Thank you.
Any questions for a first-time? Councilwoman James?
I have a question on just, when do you think you will have possibly a working model? Because it's, you know, you look at the drawings, but it's really hard to visualize what it's going to end up looking like. So when will there be a real working model that residents can actually look at and see what the traffic flow and pattern is going to be? What it's going to look like?
Are you talking the actual traffic movements, how it, and the delays and how it's going to impact traffic?
Just, just a model where you can just sit and look at, you know, how it is actually laid out.
Yeah, there was a, as part of the study that Veronica mentioned, there, there was a, a synchro model done. It's an operations model to see how traffic's going to operate in the new, in the new configuration. So that is available based on the traffic at that time. Now, that hasn't been updated with recent traffic, but the, I mean, that's something that can be done. The actual traffic volumes today compared to-
I'm not talking so much to the traffic, I'm talking design.
Oh, design models.
I'm talking about a, a working model, a design model, so that residents can look at something that represents how this is actually going to play out when it's done.
Mayor Grimal may have a- I don't want to put, uh, I, Councilwoman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're asking about an actual physical model.
Yeah.
Not a video or digital model of traffic movements, not a model in the sense of the, of, of modeling what to expect or modeling traffic patterns, but rather on sort of old-school, if you will, physical construction that's on a miniature scale that somebody could look at. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Exactly.
And I don't know that MDOT does those as a general matter, of course.
No. We don't do those.
We don't do that as a general rule, but we will put together in, at the public meeting, we'll have plan sets that we can, you know, show you, and you'll be able to see like how many lanes, how you would go from, you know, where Cass and, and the Loop meet in the top of the Loop. You'll be able to see like the laneage and all that stuff on the plan view set of the drawing. So we will have paper plan sets that you'll be able to look at.
You said the plans are 30%? You're 30% done with this current plan?
Right.
Do you have any idea when the actual full plan will be available?
Well, the project's going to let in October 2024. So final plans are generally done six months before that.
Okay.
Yep. So winter of '23, early '24. But you will see them before that. We don't want to wait until that point for you to see what's going on because that's like the point of no return. If there's comments to be made, we'll, you know, we would like those when we have public meetings, different steps along the way.
Okay.
Councilwoman Rutherford for a second time.
So this affects district more, one more than any other district because of the way it is. So my question is to the administration, what are you going to do to get the community input, number one? Number two, how do we resolve the issues that the community are going to have with this work that's being done? Because it's already, there's no way to change it at this point, correct? It's happening, correct?
Well, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say that. You know, this has been in the works for literally years. And of course, there were, going back now 10-plus years, there were some so-called charrettes and other listening sessions downtown. So there has been quite a bit done in the past, but, but a lot of that's collecting dust by now because there has been obviously this long delay in moving forward with the project. So this is the first effort in terms of getting word out to the community, and we strongly encouraged MDOT to come this evening and describe and lay out the, the plans to you as city council people, but also as part of tonight to the community. But as we've already discussed, we're going to have more of these kinds of sessions. So some of those have yet to be determined in terms of the specific details of those listening sessions, but I wouldn't say that anything is etched in stone. Some of the specifics can be modified. There are limits to how things can be modified, but ultimately, city council is going to have to allocate the matching funds from the city to make this project happen. As has been alluded to, the total cost of this project is $25 million roughly, but the city's share of that is less than a million dollars. But the project really cannot move forward unless the city allocates some funds to this. So ultimately, the decision will, as a practical matter, be before council as to whether or not council wants to move forward with this, because council will have to allocate funds to this project for this project to come to fruition.
Okay. I, I ask that because of the, it's pushback in my community about this whole project, how it's going to affect the lives. That's why I asked you that directly, so that I get an answer. So thank you, I appreciate that.
And one thing I want to just note is we wanted to come to city council and, and bring this project to you because we know you're new and before we scheduled our first public meeting. So now that we're here and Veronica will be coordinating with the city to set up that first meeting, and we'll be able to show them where we're at, what we're doing, what it's going to look like at that time and, and take comments. Like I said, we, we want the comments now versus later.
Councilman Parker for a second.
Thank you. Just one more question. From beginning to end, how long would a project of this magnitude take?
The construction is going to take two years. So the Loop would be constructed in 2025 with M59 being constructed in 2026, and I would anticipate it taking the entire construction season of those two years.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any final questions? Thank you very much for your time and your work so far. We look forward to this ongoing communication and conversation with the community. As Councilwoman Rutherford pointed out, many more needs and opportunities to engage and shape this project.
Thank you.
With that, we now move on to agenda item. Yes, feel free to applaud. Thank you for your time. Agenda item number three, public hearing to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for parcel number 641430453001 for MICA 6 Community LLC project, Webster Community Center, located at 640 West Huron Street. So how it'll roll is that we are now at this public hearing state. We will have the administration provide us with you and the community and us with some brief information recap. There've been multiple presentations so far and discussions that have been public, but the administration will give us context, the applicant will have an opportunity to present, and then we will open the public hearing, which anyone in the room this evening has the opportunity to have the floor. You don't have to have signed up before. And then we'll make sure that everyone has had a chance to speak, close the public hearing, and then there will be another public hearing that's specifically about an exemption certificate for this project specifically. Right now, we're at the public hearing for the establishment of that district. But because they're so, so interlinked, we're going to give you the information from the administration and the applicant at the beginning before both public hearings. So hopefully that made sense. We'll work through it together. So with that, administration, you have the floor to give us initial context.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis, and it's exciting to be able to open this topic up for discussion and conversation. This is truly an obsolete property in the, in the true sense of the term, in that it was a school building. And like so many other school buildings across the city sadly, due to plummeting school enrollment in the school district, it, like so many others, was sadly shuttered a number of years ago. And so like so many other school buildings, it is difficult to reutilize the building for a lot of purposes. Schools were purpose-designed and built for the purpose of being educational institutions. And so it is an obsolete building in the true sense of the word in that it needs to be rehabilitated and renovated in order to allow it to be used for this proposed adaptive reuse. The Obsolete Properties Rehabilitation Act is a state law that's specifically designed to provide tax credits to obsolete properties to make it more affordable and practical to rehabilitate them. In this case, MICA 6 is also seeking to really adhere very closely to historic accuracy and really be deeply involved in very specific and detail-oriented historic preservation. So in many respects, this proposed project, and, and project that's about to, to break ground, is really encapsulating what so many community members have said that they want to see with older school buildings, which is adaptive reuse to some sort of community-oriented purpose, and also something that tries to remain true to the historic identity of the buildings. The Oprah Tax Credit Program at the state is part of making sure that a lot of matching dollars are unlocked here. The city approving some Oprah in some form or fashion is essential and required to facilitate various state tax abatements. One of the things that our administration did in just our first few months is try to put some rhyme or reason to the number of years that are recommended for tax abatements like the Oprah. The city did not have any methodology in place in the past, or at least in recent years, to determine how long tax abatements like Oprah's would be recommended to be in effect for. Deputy Mayor Stevens and Lynette worked very hard to try to put in place some sort of framework or matrix that determines and undergirds what kinds of recommendations are made for the length of tax abatements. And that's based on the condition of the property, it's based on the number of jobs created, it's based on the permanency of those jobs, it's based on how good-paying those jobs are. So rather than just saying we're going to throw around tax credits willy-nilly, we put in place an actual matrix and framework to determine how long tax credits will be in place based on, to the extent we can, quantifiable community benefits in terms of economic redevelopment, especially in terms of job creation and good-paying jobs. And so it's based on those criteria that we are recommending that the Oprah be approved and that it be in place for six years. That's out of a maximum number of potential years of 12 years. So we believe that this is the appropriate balance in terms of foregoing some amount of tax revenue through the application of a tax abatement, while being mindful that we don't want to just give away everything in the form of tax abatement. So this is designed to be a measured approach towards providing tax abatements in a way that maximizes community benefit, ensures economic redevelopment, and ensures that we have a historic asset in the community that is being reused and adapted to a community purpose. And with that, I want to turn the microphone over to our Economic Development Director, who can get into all the details about the project and this matrix that determines the recommended length of the Oprah tax credit and some of the other details of why the city is recommending that we move forward in this way.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal, City Council residents. As Mayor just alluded, this is a project that we're presenting on behalf of MICA 6 Community LLC for the creation of the Webster Community Center. It's a 53,000-square-foot facility on five acres of land, which is the former Webster School, and it will be converted with a $17.8 million investment to provide a, more or less, a food hub for the city of Pontiac. There are approximately 12 tenants that will be in the, in the building that are all health-related, nutrition-related. There will also be a youth program, arts, theater, music for youth as well, and as also a commercial kitchen and classes that will teach nutrition. So as Mayor said, the process is to comply with the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, PA 146 of 2000, as amended. There's certain criteria on which you must comply with. MICA 6 has completed the checklist, they've submitted an application, the Oprah application, they've provided additional questions, site plans, schematic drawings, they have a certificate of obsolescence from Oakland County that has determined that the building is an obsolete building. And there's some other documentation that's been provided in the package as well. But in terms of the process that we went through, an Oprah can be between one and 12 years. We look at the number of jobs. In this case, it's projected to be approximately 68 jobs with the 12 tenants. It's a $17.8 million investment. The building has been vacant for 10 years, and currently, there's a commercial garden, you know, going on there right now. Construction is projected to begin August 15th of this year and within 14 months be completed by October 15th of 2023. During that time, there will be some construction jobs. Of course, the developer is looking to hire Pontiac residents for both these temporary jobs, construction jobs, as well as the permanent jobs once the tenants come in, who they will hire their people as well. That is pretty much an overview of what this project entails in terms of creating the district. So part of the process is initially to create the obsolete rehab property district, and then from there, the next step after this public hearing and after a resolution has been approved, from there, we can go on to the next resolution, which will also be followed by a public hearing. by a public hearing. But the application for tax exemption is the other component that's imperative for this project to move along. Are there any questions?
We won't have questions at this time.
Oh, okay.
We may when we have the resolution, action on the resolution. This is for the public at this point. So with that, we'll give the floor to the applicant to provide additional context. That laptop there, if you want to enlist anyone to help you. Is that an open court, or do I just pull one out? network connectivity. As you may recall, this city council administration has brought forth some work that will hopefully resolve those issues moving forward in the future, but we're still in that purgatory implementation phase. So we apologize to those that are trying to watch through the live feed online or through live channel broadcasting. And so ultimately, you should be able to recapture and view that going forward. Mayor Grimal.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis, for mentioning that. Yes, we apologize for the bad reception for those of you watching at home. We do anticipate that the new hardware installation should be completed by this weekend or soon thereafter. So our hope is that that will go a long ways towards resolving these issues, these transmission issues, and we should have much better transmission and higher quality coverage of council meetings very, very soon. So we appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Applicant Coleman Yocum of MICA 6 Community LLC, you have the floor.
All right. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, everyone here. It's so good to see so many people who have believed in this project for a long time here tonight to cheer it on. So I'm very grateful for everyone who's here for this meeting. Webster Community Center, Webster, you know, is located at 640 West Huron, on the west side of town. It is, it sits in front of my house that every day for, you know, the first six years that I lived on Newberry, would walk out and would see Webster, and I would say, man, I hope somebody does something with that one day. And the universe laughed and decided that that was us. So we purchased the building in 2016 on a land contract, began very aggressively paying that off. Once we hit 2017, the debt on that building was forgiven in a sort of parlay deal that I think only pirates engage in, where the deal was, I'll forgive the balance on Webster if you also take Emerson. And I said, okay, that sounds great. So this is how we end up in possession of both of these buildings. You can go to the next thing. Basic notes, 53,000 square feet, 26 classrooms, built in 1920. Wild story about that architect builder that I'll share with you someday. Come on a tour. We have a great time. Acquired the building in 2016, and that is how we ended up with Emerson, as well as now a debt-free Webster, which is great. In 2018, go ahead and go forward, we surveyed the community. We said, we don't know what we, you know, we think we want to do a community center because we hear community center all the time, that Pontiac used to have so many and now it has so few, and there are these buildings that would be great places for community centers sitting in so many of our neighborhoods. And so we did a big community survey. We interviewed about 500 people. We threw out any response from anybody who didn't live in our neighborhood. We said, we want this to be local. We want local input. We want lots of good feedback from people who actually live here and are going to be walking to this building. We've got all the results. We distilled it down to four focus areas, arts and culture, health and wellness, entrepreneurship, and youth activities. Once we knew those are the things that our neighbors wanted, we went out to organizations and said, hey, our neighbors want what you do in this future community center. Next. And so we talked to great organizations and great potential tenants and invited them to be part of this project and said, you know, do you, you know, if we renovate this building, do you want to move in? A lot of these projects and a lot of, a lot of these requests, when they come before a council like this and they ask for a tax abatement or an Oprah or something else, they have a general idea who, what they want to do with the space. They have a kind of a concept. They don't have committed tenants. We have committed tenants who are ready to move in as soon as this thing is done, and they include OLSA, Accent Pontiac, The Art Experience, the Pontiac Community Foundation, PAL, Honor Community Health, Pontiac Theater For, Rochester University, SMART, MDOT. They're all waiting for this project to happen, to move in to do what they do. If you're into pie charts, you can look at, or the Venn diagrams, you can look at that one later. I'll send you a bigger copy. Anyway, moving forward, a couple of things about this and why we need the tax abatement. Most of our tenants are nonprofits, and they are relatively small. They're great organizations that are doing mighty, mighty things on a very few dollars. And so it's hard to charge them the rent that it's going to cost to fill that building and to keep that building operating. Many of them are capped, federally capped, at how much money they can spend on rent. We have this problem where almost half of our building is unrentable space. It's big hallways. It's a giant gym. It's this beautiful foyer that if you went to that school or if you've been on a tour, you know that space. We have these spaces that still require maintenance and heat and electricity and utilities, but they're not covered under anyone's rent. And so we could raise the rent to cover this deficit that we're going to be operating at. We could raise it to $21 a square foot, but the kind of organizations that we want in this building wouldn't be able to afford it. And so, if you want to go to the next one, we are running out of deficit right now. We are planning a deficit for this building. In order to make sure the kinds of tenants that we want are in this building, we have a shortfall, and I know that, and that's okay. I'd like, you know, our annual deficit without this tax abatement is about $33,000 a year. I believe in this project. Our community believes in this project. Our funders believe in this project. I'm not worried about overcoming $33,000. Now, an abatement would help. It would bring that number down considerably, if you want to jump to the next slide. It would bring it down just a little bit to a manageable, a more manageable number, and that's okay. So in your packet, you will see a different number. The city and I came to a little bit different math on what we're asking for in terms of abated versus what we would pay. The city estimates that about 75% of the jobs in this building will be people coming from outside of the city of Pontiac to work there. 100% of my staff lives here. Accent Pontiac, a lot of their staff lives here. OLSA, a lot of their staff live here. I think that number is going to be a lot higher of local folks. But what we are asking for and what we are expecting is about some forgiveness of about $21,500 a year. We are still going to pay $17,500 a year. And so you kind of see the math, eight years, we would have saved $173,000, but we still would have paid $141,000. This isn't a thing where I'm asking you to not charge us any taxes ever for the, for 12 years or whatever. We're just asking for a little bit of help, and that's what it is. So actually, Dylan, if you'll go back, so $22,000 just for some perspective, is a part-time employee. What I'm asking for help from the city for to run a community center is a part-time employee every year for 12 years. You can ask for up to 12 years. We have requested for the full 12 years. One of the things that we feel like the city didn't take into account, I guess, and maybe we are the first that's sort of under this, this sort of new math that we're figuring out in terms of how to apply abatements, the numbers are limited to focusing on employment. But there's a lot more benefits that come with a community center in our neighborhood than just the jobs. And if the math works out that the people bringing the most jobs to the city are the people who get the biggest abatements, maybe those are companies that didn't need an abatement. This is just something I'm asking for a little bit of help to make the math work so that we can do this and move forward. Next slide. This is what our new deficit will be. We'll still be running a deficit. There are some people who go, Coleman's going to make a million dollars on this community center. No, I'm making more work for myself. I have to raise more money. So this is what our new, our new balance will be in terms of the math that we're expecting on the building once it is 100% occupied. Dylan, if you'll move forward. The benefits. Once this is done, Pontiac will have a community center. We're expecting to serve 14,000 people in this building every year, 200,000 visits annually. That's, so if a child is at Head Start, and there are going to be six Head Start classrooms in this building, they count as one in terms of an individual, but they are coming to this building every day, and so that's the 200,000 visits. This is a vacant building on Huron that will be revitalized and will be open and will be fabulous. And so we're really excited about that. That is, it's our front door. The city's front door is Huron, and we want a beautiful building on that side of town that looks, looks really good for people who are coming and going. Finally, this is a proof of concept. There are a lot of vacant buildings sitting around right now that different investors and different people have grabbed on and said, oh, we can do this. We think, you know, and then they get in and they find out, like, it's a lot harder to make this math work. In order to do it, we're running out of deficit. Most people aren't willing to do that. Most businesses look at this and they go, that's a losing venture. We're not willing to try. This project has already inspired additional investment. The county said, we can't have a new community center sitting next to a vacant building. So the county is spending $250,000 to knock down 34 Murphy, which is a large vacant apartment building that's been in my neighborhood and vacant for 15 years. It's already inspiring additional investment. And once we show that this kind of project can work, that this math works, that will make projects like Emerson, like Purdue, like Longfellow, like Jefferson, much more believable. And that's my case. That is the case that we are making. We are asking for the full 12 years. The city has their recommendation at six. Council, we are asking for the full 12 and would love to sort of entertain the conversation from there.
Thank you. At this point, I will be calling an opening, this public hearing. So the public hearing is now open at 7:18 PM. Stay seated. Stay seated. What I'll do is that, so that way you don't have to stand, it's snaked in a long line, is that raise your hand, and I'll try and spot check, and then you can come, and you'll have two minutes for this particular public hearing. So initially, raise your hand if you'd like to be speaking. All right. So I see hand, and then hand. So please take the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor Grimal. Vice Mayor Kelfany, council members. My name is Madonna Van Fossen. I am the Oakland County Ombuds Person for SMART Transportation, the public transportation that runs through the city. I also have the honor of sitting on the MICA 6 Board of Directors. Very excited about this project. When Coleman told me about this project, I said, I need to connect you with Robert Kramer, who is the deputy general manager at SMART. As soon as Roger, as soon as Robert heard about this project, he pretty much said, what can we do? How can we get involved? So we're going to have an indoor bus stop inside the community center. The bus is going to be able to pull up right in front of the center. We're going to have it outfitted with comfortable chairs. There's going to be vending machines in the room for clients, ride, our riders who are waiting for the bus, big screen TVs that is going to give the on-time arrival for buses that are coming to and from. We're going to relocate the bus stop so it's right directly in front of the school, and it will line up with the stop across the street on the south side of Huron. We're working with MICA 6 and MDOT to get a flashing light so pedestrians can cross safely to get over to the community center. We absolutely 100% support this project, and I would really just absolutely be, love to be able to come back and tell SMART that the city of Pontiac supports it, the council supports it with the 12-year abatement that we're requesting.
And please state your address for the record. You can use SMART's address for everyone's information. Because it's a public hearing, we are required for addresses to be stated, so.
So my work address, my office address, is 2021 Barrett Drive in Troy, Michigan.
Thank you.
Very much.
Ma'am, in the beautiful aquamarine seafoam green, if you could please come to the microphone. And ma'am, in the black, you'll be next. And sir, in the dark blazer, you'll follow her.
Hi, everybody. I just, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say, like, I wish I had a community center for the kids to go to when they were younger. Like, those are my two boys over there. They're, they live in Pontiac. They, I mean, I wish I had that. Like, that's the truth. I have my grandkids over there. I want them to have a community center. I want them to be able to, for my daughter to go to work and be able to leave them because her grandofficer will do, hopefully, like a daycare there to help parents, to help young parents. So I really think this will be a great project. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you guys besides, I'm excited. I'm really excited, and I really want to do, like, almost anything that needs to be done. I'll, I'll do whatever needs to. I really want this to be a good place for the kids to grow up at, you know? I've, I've literally seen young kids late at night just hanging out, and I tell them, like, hey, where's your parents? Oh, they're working, they're working. So it's like they need something like this to, so they don't go wrong. They don't go someplace bad. You know what I mean? That's, I'm nervous. I'm sorry, guys.
You're okay.
I mean, I just hope you guys get my point. You don't want to lose your kids. You don't want to lose them to something bad. You don't want to lose them to getting shot in the back or something like that. You want them in a place that they're going to be safe all the time. You know, there was a gang going around in my neighborhood. They beat up my brother and some other guys who were there. So you know what? I don't know. I got crazy. I have my dog. I said, hey, who wants to fight? Because if you're going to fight them, one day you're going to fight me. So who wants to take me out? So I know that's probably crazy, but that's what I did in my neighborhood, and they stopped. They had respect. They didn't cuss. So I want that for them, even if only for my kids, but other people's kids do. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Belinda Guerra. I live at 28 Newberry Street. Thank you. Pontiac.
Name and address.
Janice Smith, and my address is representing OLSA as 196 Caesar Echevez. I'm one of the tenants that we're very excited to be part of this partnership. I represent OLSA and the Head Start classrooms that will be coming to this building. We're very excited for our families. Often, we find that transportation is a barrier for our families to get to one of our locations. And having classrooms in this location, it, part of a neighborhood, we will be able to have our students be able to walk to class and have that accessibility, especially with, you know, the possibility with having, you know, bus transportation right there on the premise. We're really excited about that, that opportunity for our families and to, you know, have more children be able to access our Head Start services. The other thing that I wanted to talk about too, Cole had mentioned that some agencies have a cap, and I'm one of them. We're a federally funded program. We're, we're capped in that our funder, the office of Head Start, requires that our, we pay rent that is no higher than fair market value. So it's, it's very important for us to be able to be in a building where we can provide services and not go over that fair market value in rent. So, so, thank you.
Thank you. As the gentleman in the blazer comes forward, another show of hands of those that would like to be recognized. Okay.
Hi, my name is Larry Jasper. I'm at 265 Marlborough, Bloomfield Hills, just a couple of miles from here. I recommend doing this project 100%. This community needs something like this. There's obvious other things you could do with daycare, which is an issue with most of your citizens of Pontiac. They're, you know, both parents are working, they have nowhere to put their children. This seems like a great opportunity. As far as Oprah's concerned, you know, you might want to revisit Bloomfield Park. They got a 35-year tax abatement. They had a second Brownsfield added in there that tore down $500 million. This doesn't deserve it where this project does. You have the bus there. You also might want to look at a green infrastructure. If you took a little, look at little cities, you'll see I've come up with a new way of purifying water through nanofibers, a new RBC. This is all going to be beneficial for the tenants. They should get a full tax abatement, not half. They shouldn't have to pay half. Those people, they don't hire anyone from the city of Pontiac, very few people, and they're getting huge amounts of money. By the way, there was a 425 agreement that you guys are supposed to get a 2% cap of that, $2 billion project. You're not getting a penny. So support this because there's so many things going on in here. You could have basketball arenas. You can have all kinds of different restaurants that might come in and actually do that tenant lease. Give your nonprofits a discount. They don't need to pay $21 a square foot. In fact, I don't know if you can get $21 a square foot here. Point being is, there isn't anybody in here, and all these children don't have anywhere to go in the city of Pontiac. It's on Huron Street. This is going to be the center of attention. You want to change the city of Pontiac to downtown and attract people here? Show them what you're made of. Do something different and actually give the money to the people who actually deserve it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, ma'am, sir, and ma'am.
My name is Iol. My name is Ayala Miller at 763 Pensacola Avenue, Pontiac, Michigan. And I've just recently started coming to the city council meetings, and in one of the meetings, we talked, you talked about the 2016 millage that was approved to expand funds for centers open exclusively to youth under age 21 and aimed at curbing juvenile delinquency within the city. And I know that there's been four community centers in Pontiac that's closed now. And I want to know what's the status of that millage, and are any of those centers coming back? I commend the MICA VI project, I think is worthy, you know, of an abatement. But I also think that those community centers that provided so much to our youth in that area should not go neglected, and they have been for a long time. And there's a lot going on with the skate parks and the MDOT projects, but nothing really community-based where we lost so much. And in those neighborhoods where we see a lot of the juvenile delinquency, and the MICA project will probably help that, but I think the community centers would do more to help that in our community. And I want to see that come to fruition. Thank you.
My name is Rolando Ibarra. I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Accent Pontiac. We're at 12 North Saginaw. We are slated to be one of the tenants that's going to be in this building, and one of the things I wanted to talk about is, we talked a little bit about, like, how we're investing in the adults, AKA through jobs. But if we looked at that Venn diagram and look at the programs that are coming in and looking how much that's investing in our youth, how much we're investing in our kids. I performed for my students last week, and I got emotional talking to them about Accent Pontiac and why I wanted to work there, because I would have really benefited from that as a child. As a young kid who wanted to be a musician, my grandpa was a musician. He named my mom Cecilia after the patron saint of musicians. I wanted so badly to be a musician, but my mom could only afford to send me and my brother to one lesson, and we had a guy who, he would run back and forth to a room, teach my brother guitar, come back, teach me drums, and we could only afford to go there for a few months. And then I had to figure out the rest on my own. So I see the benefits and the investments and how it's already coming into return, seeing our kids perform, seeing their confidence grow, seeing their school attendance go up because they want to come to Accent Pontiac. So those are the things that we should be considering also. You know, the city previously was paying an absurd amount of rent on a building that didn't benefit any of the youth, you know? And so it's weird to see, I mean, I know we have to talk about it, and we have to, you know, go back and forth, but like, this doesn't seem like that much compared to that $10,000, $10,000 of rent a month that was going on previously. So that's all. I just wanted to come here, lend my support, and talk, and remind you that this is not just an investment into jobs, into the adults, but also into our youth, and that's going to come into fruition long after you all are gone, and hopefully, long after I'm gone also.
Ma'am?
Catherine Desaro, 1200 Colony Lane, Pontiac. I heard something tonight that bothers me. I'm all for the MICA VI project, but if it's not going to be completed until '25, the MDOT project will be torn up right in front of the school at that point in time. Now, that's something that needs to be looked at. Is MICA VI a nonprofit organization, or is it a profit organization? If it is a nonprofit organization, I don't understand the tax abatement need, because they're allowed to make a certain amount of money. Churches make money. They're called capital investment funds, and they're called working funds, operational funds. So I don't understand, $33,000 isn't a lot of money. So what is the issue here?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a long time since I've been in this building. Mayor, council, I just want to speak on this MICA VI. First of all, I'm going to say, I am a board member of this amazing organization, but I'm coming here tonight not as a board member. I'm coming here as a citizen of Pontiac. Y'all know how hard I fought for the youth millage to pass, how hard I fought for us to have a youth center or a community center. We have that opportunity now. We have tons of resources that's going to be in there. If you're not for Webster, who are you for? Like, what, how could you be against Webster? If you're against Webster, you're against OSHA, you're against Honors Community Health, Rochester University, you're against Smart, you're against Pontiac Community Foundation, you're against Plain and Fancy, you're against Accent Pontiac, you're against all these people. These are tenants in this building, which are nonprofits, too. They can't pay a lot. So that's why the tax abatement is so important. We got so many companies out here in Pontiac that we gave tax abatements 20, 30, 40 years, and they don't do nothing for Pontiac. We got a guy that's here trying to provide resources for our community, and how are we going to give that a hard time? We roll out the carpet for somebody that's not from Pontiac, but when people from Pontiac try to get things done, man, they got to jump through so many hoops. So I'm here to support MICA VI. Give them them 12 years.
And could you please state your name and address for the record?
Norbert Burrows, 208 Seward Street.
And while the next gentleman's coming up, other hands of those that wish to be recognized for the public hearing? Got it? Got it?
Good evening, everyone. Noah Walterman, 280 Liberty Streets. Some of you might know my face, and you know, when something touches me, I have to say something. Why is it that we have this discussion? This man here is doing good for this city. I'm going to speak just as an outsider. I've moved to the city from New York City, by the way, of Jamaica, West Indies. He's doing something good. There should be no discussions about giving him funding and asking, "What more can we do?" Because every other city around Pontiac is looking and saying, "Oh, when are they going to fail?" And if you don't start supporting him and more people like him, we might as well just cut up this city and part it out. We saw that almost happen with the EM manager. We missed that bullet. Let's not do that with this man. Give him his funding. Give him more. Tell all these companies that are in here now, "Time to show up." Enough with the logos, and, "Oh, we are going to do this for the company." Put your mouth. Let's see the dollars. Let's start rebuilding Pontiac. I am tired of hearing everybody around the city saying, "Pontiac is a piece of shit." It's not.
Order, please. That is against our rules. I understand.
My apologies. It's not. Pontiac is one of the greatest cities that I've ever come to know. It has people who supports this community. Let's stop the infighting and start supporting each other. He has done nothing but good since I met him, since he's moved here. He knows my family. Every group that comes into his community to help, they know my house is a safe house. I've been told I'm a different person. Not a problem. He knows me. You know me. Quite a few know me as a person. Let's start helping each other. No more infighting in Pontiac. Let's start supporting each other. If not, you might as well just cut up the city and pass it around to every other city around here. No more. Please. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a point of order. Can you, for the crowd's benefit, explain the purpose of a public hearing and our obligation to conduct a public hearing? Seems there's some confusion over why we're doing this, and there may be dissent, but this is actually a requirement.
To the point of order, we are required by state law for when a district is established, an obsolete property rehabilitation, so-and-so district is established, we're required to hold public hearings, and for the exemption certificate. So this will be followed also by a legally required public hearing as well. So hopefully, that's helpful. Ma'am, you're next, and then you.
Hi, my name is Irma Alvarez. I live at 323 Prospect. I'm so forward for this because this man has changed so many lives of young girls. This man, with his help, we have been able to teach young women, and we all know, we're young women at one stage or another, who didn't have guidance, to generally, if you guys don't believe it or not, put on a bra, be women, know how to respect themselves so other people can respect themselves. If you guys are willing to spend thousands of dollars on that Phoenix Center that nobody uses, that nobody uses, it's for crap. You guys don't want to help this man who's willing to help young ladies not get raped, not allow them, not allow them, not to allow other people to degrade them. You guys don't want to give him money? I'm ashamed. Thank you.
If I may.
What's your name and address?
Coleman Yokum, 29 Waldo. We supported an event for young girls mentoring. I did not fit anyone with a bra.
My name is Leanne Schmidt. I am the board treasurer for MICA VI. My address is 3067 Allen Road in Ortonville, Michigan. I come a great distance regularly to be here. I teach at Notre Dame Prep in Pontiac and have been doing so since 1999, so I've been well invested in the city of Pontiac. I've been in this area of Michigan all my life, and Pontiac has been part of that. I am thankful to be part of MICA VI and to offer my skills and support to the development of this organization and to fueling the community center. But you don't need to hear how wonderful the community center is, that's been well-supported, and the materials you've got in front of you, and the people who have testified here about what a wonderful organization it will be and how much it will do for the community. The important thing to ask you for is what the investment of the city of Pontiac will be in this. For just over $20,000 a year for the next 12 years, what will you get back? You will be getting back activity areas for children so that other activities that perhaps young people might do that are not so nice will be less likely to happen, so that people have healthy food available and accessible in the community when it was a food desert. So these are ways that the city can invest in this program for just over $20,000 a year. And I can tell you that there are a lot of other organizations and individuals who are contributing significantly as well. You've already heard that the county is doing a demolition project in excess of what the total 12-year abatement would be in order to balance that out. I hope that you will consider this. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Others who wish to have the floor, show of hands.
My name is Matthew Vorse. My address is 2085 Canal Street, Commerce Township. I'm on the board of MICA VI as well. I just wanted to bring up the idea that the mayor presented and the economic development lady about the matrix. Wondering if there's a, you can quantify the social impact of, you know, an organization like MICA VI, and this lady in front that was talking about the crime that goes on in the neighborhood and what that costs the city in dollars. I'm sure the police probably have statistics about that, but I do think that if you could quantify it, put it, and maybe change your matrix or add that to your matrix if you don't already, then that might not be a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. President Garrett?
I live at 100 Miami.
And your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gil Garrett, city of Pontiac. I live at 100 Miami, and I served as a police officer in this, in District, well, it's District 2, but it's Section 3 to us for over 15 years. And so I just want to say I support this particular project as a citizen, as a police officer, and then I'm grateful that it's in front of you, and I'm grateful that it's in front of this administration, because unlike a lot of our residents, they get passionate about things, and they get passionate about what's not been done behind the scenes. But I want to give a testament to each one of these men and women sitting up on this dais right now that they understand the urgency and they're looking out for everybody in the city. And please understand that they're doing a due diligence, and that's what they have to do. That's what we've paid them and elected them to do. But by far, never forget where we came from, and only been here less than 100 days. And I appreciate it as coming before you, because at least I know he's going to get a fair shake. Everything is going to be looked at, it's going to be documented, and I'm not just saying it because I'm over here every day and I'm in this with you, but as a resident of 23 years, I'm just proud to say that I got a council and executive team that I can be proud to say that somebody's going to come before him and get a fair shake. Thank you.
You. Others who wish to speak at this evening's public hearing? Any further comment? Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
I'm Lita T. C. Morris. Can you hear me?
A little bit. You can also take the microphone as well.
Oh, thanks.
If you can give your name and address.
Do I have to give my address?
Unfortunately, we're required, yes.
Can I just say Ferry?
So your name and Ferry Avenue.
Yes, Lita T. C. Morris. I would like to say that I'm really nervous, so bear with me. I don't really speak much, but I am definitely here for the project as well. I am a single mom, and I really appreciate everything that they have done for us. It is hard to find a babysitter, especially for a special needs child, and just my daughter alone, and to provide, you know, activities for her. So we are definitely pro for the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Any additional comments? Any additional comments? Any additional comments? This public hearing is now closed at 7:44 PM. Now, we are at our second public hearing. The public hearing for approval of application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for MICA VI Community LLC Project, Webster Community Center, located at 640 West Huron Street. The information that's provided essentially covers both of these steps, and if you've already spoken, you can consider that your sentiments have been reflected for all the issues involved, but this is a second public hearing, so if you have not yet spoken or would like to speak specifically to this exemption certificate, AKA the same project we've already been talking about, this opportunity is here for you. So, this public hearing is now opened at 7:45 PM. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak for the approval of application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for MICA VI Community LLC Project, Webster Community Center, located at 640 West Huron Street? Any requests for public comment? Any requests for public comment? Any requests for public comment? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed at 7:45 PM. So we have now satisfied the legally required public hearings that we posted for and voted on as a previous council to post for, so those public opportunities for you to weigh in have been concluded. In a short while, those resolutions that will act on this project will come forth, but we have a few items that come before it. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution recognizing Earth Day as April 22, 2022?
Move by Carrington. Support.
Move by Carrington, seconded by Goodman. That resolution is before us. It's full in writing, if you'd like to peruse it. But long story short, Earth Day is this Friday. We are proclaiming that, embracing that, and em- We are proclaiming that, embracing that, and emphasizing that the protection of our environment and cleaning our neighborhoods is a priority, and we welcome all community organizations and citizens joining us in that very important effort. Any other discussion on this resolution? Speakers list having been exhausted, we are now at roll call on adoption of the council resolution recognizing Earth Day on April 22, 2022. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution recognizing Arbor Day on April 29, 2022?
Moved by Carrington. Support.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Parker. That motion is now before us. Before this month is out, there's another sort of earth and environmental focused holiday that's coming up, Arbor Day. It's about the protection and planting of trees, and what the city council is pointing out is that we recognize that there's been a lot of lost trees in recent decades, and it really does take a toll on the quality of life and many other factors. And so we welcome warmly those residents and community partners that will partner with us as a city to replace and protect our tree canopy here in the city, including the Pontiac Rotary Club and other community partners that are planting trees in collaboration with the city and council and community members in the coming days. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. We are now at adoption of the council resolution recognizing Arbor Day as April 29, 2022. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution celebrating Pontiac Rotary Club's 100th anniversary?
Moved by Carrington. Support.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Goodman. That motion is now before us. We have many very important civic service and fraternal organizations in our city, and the Rotary Club is one of them, and they are turning 100 years old this year. And to celebrate that, as we just mentioned, they are planting 100 trees to celebrate their 100 years. So this resolution, on behalf of you and us, the entire city, and in partnership with the mayor, we are congratulating them on this very big deal, a big milestone, to have gone that long and to still be making a positive impact and advocating for Pontiac youth, and also to acknowledge the work that they're doing still in the community and work to be done, including the planting of those trees in memoriam. Anyone wish to speak on this motion? Speakers list exhausted. No further discussion. At adoption of the council resolution celebrating Pontiac Rotary Club's 100th anniversary, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution supporting body cameras for Oakland County Sheriff deputies?
Moved by Carrington, or support.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Carrington. That motion is before us. At a recent city council meeting, Mayor Grimal has shared with the community and the council his advocacy for the implementation of body worn cameras by Oakland County Sheriff's deputies, who we as the city contract with Oakland County for the providing of law enforcement services. And so he shared with us the welcome news that come June, that they'll be rolling that out, beginning that process, and that Pontiac assigned deputies will be the first to have the implementation of that. So, want to give the floor, Mayor Grimal, for some context.
Well, thank you, President McGuinness. You summed it all up, though. So, you know, this has been a work in progress for some time. I had meetings with the county sheriff, undersheriff, starting back in November and December. I know that a lot of county commissioners have been involved in this process. I've been in touch with county commission chairman, Dave Woodward, advocating for this. And finally, we're going to see all, ultimately, all sheriff's deputies in Oakland County wearing body cameras. I've been an advocate for body cameras for many, many years, going back in time. So it's great to see that this is finally happening and will be implemented for all sheriff's deputies. It'll first be implemented for road deputies, those who are actually out patrolling. Ultimately, it will also include those deputies who work in the county jail. But among the road patrol deputies, those who are out in the community and that will be first prioritized, I'm happy to report that Pontiac will be the first community to see these implemented. And so, you know, there have been some supply challenges getting body cameras because of all the supply chain issues that are out there with products in general across the board. But we will see this begin to be implemented in June, and Pontiac will be first in line.
Others who wish to have the floor. Councilman Goodman.
Simply to speak on this, given last week's conversation and discussion that we had around that, I 100% support this. So, just so you, because I knew you didn't hear me, given last week's conversation around the Flock Security Systems, I obviously support this. I believe in having as many measures there to protect our citizens as possible. And given the realities of being a person of color in America, being a person that's been poor, and also recognize that people who are in different groups, whether they be economically disadvantaged or housing disadvantaged, need the same protections that everyone else does. And given the situations that we witnessed, especially in the past week or two in Grand Rapids, this is, this is more than important because, again, we have to do everything we can to protect our citizens. I think this is one of the main steps that we have to take to do so.
Others who wish to have the floor. So you can always access the text of these resolutions, but we, as a city council, if we adopt this, would be supporting the utilization of those body worn cameras, advocate that it enhances transparency, accountability, and safety for Pontiac residents and for Sheriff Department staff, that we acknowledge Mayor Grimal advocating on behalf of Pontiac residents for this action, and that we request regular updates from the Oakland County Sheriff Department on the planning and implementation for body worn cameras coming into active use. Any further discussion? Speakers list having been exhausted. On adoption of the council resolution supporting body cameras for Oakland County Sheriff's deputies, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at, we amended the agenda earlier, as you may recall, so we're now at, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for parcel number 641430453001 for MICA 6 Community LLC Project Webster Community Center located at 640 West Huron Street?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington, so that motion is now before us. So want to give the floor, Councilman Rutherford.
So earlier in the presentation, Coleman, you said that y'all had, how much of the $17,285,000 you actually have secured?
So that $17 million number is just the construction dollar. So we have raised and spent about $1.2 million already, sort of in architecture work and environmental work that we've done, in getting on the state historic preservation list, that sort of thing. So we are into that 17, so development, like folks who develop things know that, you know, tax credits, historical tax credits are there because we are now on the national registry. That's about $4 million. We don't actually see that until construction's finished. So because we know that we qualify for that, we have to take out a bridge loan for that amount of money, and then we get it at the end. New market tax credits work very similarly, and then our foundations are slowly jumping in. We have a pretty exciting announcement coming, but, so, we'll say right now, if we are counting our new markets and historicals of the 17 construction, we have eight and a half million?
My second question is, you received $425,000 for the, for the brown incident. You know what I'm talking about, the brown?
Yes.
Okay. And so my question is, is this, you stated earlier that you needed the 12 years. I don't understand if you need that when you've already received funding for certain programs. So can you elaborate on that to me?
You didn't understand why we need more funding because we've already received some funding?
Yeah. I don't, so I, so my thing is this, to be a good steward, you have to ask tough questions. So I'm asking questions that if no one else is going to, I have to ask.
Sure.
I'm asking, how mu, you already said you have $4 million. I got that. Is the 4, is the $425,000 already included with the $4 million, or you're not counting that?
No, it's not counted.
Okay. And then my last question, just so that I'm clear, you stated earlier that, I want to make, I wrote it down, hold on one second. So no, out of, the $4 million is actually secured, but you don't have the rest of the funding secured, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You're right, that's okay. Thank you.
Others who wish to have the floor. The resolution before us speaks to six years. The applicant, and the maximum is 12. The applicant's advocating for 12. Is there any interest from the council to have a number other than six?
I got a question, President.
Protestant Carrington.
Yes, this is concerning the establishment of the district, right? Not necessarily the tax abatement.
This is the establishment of the district. The language, though, does include a six years. So want to give the administration opportunity. My understanding is that it sounds, seems like there's a sunset provision in both or a time limitation on both. Is that the administration's expectation and advocacy?
Thank you, Council President. Generally speaking, the, the district would not have, the district itself would not have a sunset on it. You would probably want to, for the district itself, if you think at all you may be inclined, once they've gone through six years, to go back and give them an additional six years, which is something that you are absolutely able to do. You don't have to, you could give them two years and then give them 10 years after that. You don't have to give them the entirety of the 12 years at one time. But if that is something that you think you may be inclined to do, you would not want to constrain the time period of the district to some number that is less than what you would be able to do for the entirety of the abatement itself.
Got it. Can I have a motion to amend the resolution in the, now therefore be it resolved after the parcel number, strike the language that can, says for six years commencing upon approval of the exemption certificate period. Additionally, a development agreement will be engaged for compliance to terms specified. So it'll basically insert a period after the parcel number and strike that for the district specifically.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Okay. So what we have right now is the establishment of the district, saying this parcel, this sort of plot of land, is an obsolete property rehabilitation district. And when we get to the next resolution, which is about this project and their exemption certificate, that's where we'll say, what's the period of time? Is it six? Is it 12? Is it something in between? But we don't want to, per the deputy mayor's helpful context, we don't want to make double work for us. We don't necessarily want to put a time limitation on the establishment of the district itself. Any further discussion? All right. Speakers list having been exhausted, we are now voting on the amendment, which is striking that language that, that we just spoke to. Hearing no further debate, speakers list exhausted. Roll call on that amendment, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We're back to the main resolution as amended, so that, that change is now reflected in the document before us. Any further discussion on the establishment of the district?
Well, not the district, but I had another question for him.
Okay, feel free.
So you're not going to be looking after, let's say we gave you the abatement, correct?
Correct.
You're not going to come back and say, well, I need ARP funding? Is that in your, is that projected in your $17 million?
ARP funding is currently, from the city, is currently not in our projections.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
May I elaborate? There, there's a possibility, we're having conversations with the county, and they have made the suggestion of some sort of matching arrangement with someone, and so that, that might be, whether that's with the foundation, whether that's with the city, whether that's with the state, those questions are still out there, but it is not currently in our budget.
Okay.
Other discussion on this resolution, which establishes the district? I think it is very verifiable to state that this property and this parcel is obsolete. I'm sorry to say it's true, but it is true since it was closed by us taxpayers in 2006 due to budgetary and enrollment issues, and so its beautiful history is, that chapter is closed, but the property has indeed become obsolete. Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. We now move into voting on adoption of the resolution to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for par, the parcel that's located at 640 West Huron Street. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Now, is there a motion to adopt the resolution for the exemption certificate, the Oprah exemption certificate for the same parcel and same project?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Nicholson, so that motion is now before us for that resolution. Anything further administration you'd like to provide for context? There was a lot of questions and, and feedback from the community. I know that you're always very proactive in absorbing that. Didn't want to let the opportunity to go by if you wanted to elaborate on anything further for the community.
Well, I do want to allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into the nuts and bolts of the calculation behind the recommended length of time, because I wasn't involved in that myself. So I'm going to defer to him. I do just want to acknowledge what a lot of community members have said, which is that in recent years, the city government has lavished like candy tax abatements on for-profit entities here. Now, none of us up here were involved in that, because all of us have just been in office three and a half months. But yeah, that's what we're trying to get away from in general, which is why we put this matrix in place, is to say we're going to stop throwing around tax abatements, the community's money, willy-nilly, without any rhyme or reason to it. Now, having said that, I also understand the, the point that's been made, that there are various intangible benefits here to the community in the form of community oriented services. And that's why when I spoke initially about this project, I was so vehement about supporting an Oprah arrangement for this project, because this is, as I said before, but I'm going to say it again, this is the kind of project that everybody in the community says they want to see. It's a community oriented project. It's about reusing an obsolete facility for community oriented events and services, and it's done in a way that celebrates the historic heritage of the building. So that's why, you know, we've been so enthusiastic about supporting an Oprah arrangement for the city. We applied the matrix that we have in place. You know, we could go back and forth about the jobs and the nature of the jobs and whether they'll go to residents or non-residents, and some of that is really hard to predict, honestly. The other thing I'll say is some of these jobs are not necessarily new jobs. They're existing entities that have employment in Pontiac that are relocating where that employment exists within the city. So I would note that as well. So some of it's not new jobs at all to Pontiac, but we're excited about the project. In terms of the specific length of time of the abatement, I want to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens to talk about the nuts and bolts of that calculation.
Thank you, Mayor. So, City Council, I think that you have seen the, the matrix that we use, but for, for the benefit of everyone who is listening, as, as the mayor, as the mayor stated, as was alluded to earlier, the city of Pontiac in the past would literally just get information and make a decision, and as we can see from some of the most recent abatements, the decision was, what's the maximum? Okay, go with the maximum. We are taking a different approach to request for investment in a project, and I use that word specifically "investment." This is the city of Pontiac's investment in this project. So anytime we are looking at any type of tax abatement project, we're not looking at it as, you know, what are we giving? What are we just throwing away? What are we investing? And what is, what is the expected return on investment? And so as we make our investment decision, we have parameters that we look at. We're looking to ask, what is the overall cost of the project? And based on that overall cost of the project, there are cutters. And each cutter you get to makes us feel like there is another level of year And each cutter you get to makes us feel like there is another level of year that we will invest in your project. When we look at the project, we look at the jobs that are created. We don't just look at the jobs that are created, we look at the quality of the jobs that are created. Are they full-time jobs? Are they part-time jobs? Are they paying $15 an hour? Are they paying $17 an hour? Are they paying, um, the county median wage? Are they paying more than 20% of the county median wage? And again, I'm using very specific ideas here, and I'm using, when I say the county median wage, you know, that, that number is not $15 an hour, it's not $17 an hour. It is a number that is calculated every year, well, every 10 years during the census, and then updated every five years during, during the census update. And we use that to say, we're not just saying we want any old job that anybody can do, we are saying that we want jobs that are representative of something that is going to be a rising tide for the entirety of the city. And so I can guarantee you that I can go out tomorrow and say, hey, if I give you a 12-year abatement, will you bring jobs to the city? I can find, um, tons of companies that'll say, yeah, I'll bring $7 an hour jobs, I'll bring minimum wage jobs. But we're not trying to incentivize and invest in that. We are trying to set our investment policy so that we are investing in opportunities that are creating a greater opportunity for the city. And so, other factors that we take into account when we look at our investment matrix, so we talked about the, the actual investment that the company is making, we talked about the jobs that are being promised, but then we also look at some, I won't quite call them intangibles, because according to, to the matrix, they are very tangible. Is the building an obsolete building? Are we looking at an adaptive reuse instead of tearing down the building? How long has the building been vacant and been an eyesore to, to the public? So those are all things that we take into account as we determine how many years we want to invest in this project before we start to see the fruits of that investment. And the fruits, of course, of that investment from the city's very, very minute standpoint is seeing the tax, the taxes gained on that property. And then the taxes gained on that property are just reinvested into the city. They, they aren't used to, to say, ooh, it is a windfall, let's go, let's go to Vegas. No, those taxes are used to pave the roads. Those taxes are used to pay for public safety. Those taxes are used to pay for all of the amenities that the citizens want to have. And so every time we invest in a property, we are foregoing the ability to provide those services at the level that, that the citizen should have those services provided for a period of time, because the promise of the investment is that at the end of that term, we will have even more funds on a growing, on a continuing basis to do that. A question was raised, and I'm glad that Mr. Yocum is standing at the mic right now, a question was raised as to, hey, isn't Micah Six a nonprofit? And as a nonprofit, shouldn't this entire building be non-taxable? And so I will actually let him talk to that, because when he first, I won't say when he first brought this project up. When the project first came to me, so again, we came into office in January, when the project first came to me, that was the exact question that I asked him. I said, hey, as a nonprofit, a tax abatement is not going to help you at all, because you don't pay real estate taxes. And so he explained to me that the way he has put his capital stack together, and so for those of you in the audience, lay term capital stack, it just means the way he has decided to finance the deal and bring in all the different sources of money to be able to get to the $17 million plus that is needed for construction, he needed to allow the property to be taxable. And in allowing the property to be taxable, that increased the overall operating costs. And so now what he's saying is, can the city invest in this project to reduce that operating cost, so that I can actually get the $17 million that I need to do the project? One other thing that I would like to say is, one of the sources of funding that he is going after is funding from the MEDC, that's the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And the MEDC, um, in order for your application to be competitive, you need to have some input from the local municipality. So there is not a, a number of that input, right? The MEDC does not say the local municipality has to give $10,000. The MEDC does not say the local municipality has to give 10% of the project. The MEDC says the local municipality needs to participate in the project. And so this would be the local municipality participating in the project. And so with that, I, I would like to ask Mr. Yocum to explain why you chose to allow the property, the project to be taxable.
Sure. So because, so Micah Six is going to own Webster Community Center LLC, it's not uncommon way to structure it, and it, because it is owned by technically a for-profit that, as I demonstrated, actually loses money every year, it is eligible for several million dollars worth of new market tax credits. And so that is why it is structured that way. We chose to incur 30, the potential for $33,000 in taxes every year, so that we could qualify for millions in money to get the job done.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Coleman. Thanks for everyone in District Two that came out tonight to support this project. This is my district. Webster School couldn't get any more deep into the heart of District Two. District Two is based in strong communities, and this neighborhood is where the kids are. When I drive around the district, I don't see children in the streets as much as I see on Dwight, on Lincoln, on Murphy, on Liberty, on Newberry, on Waldo. This is the part of my district where we are, there are, there are families, there are large families, there are people who, who really look forward to this project, and I hear from them day in and day out. I want to start, because I intend to vote on this resolution tonight, and I've gotten some word from some of my constituents that they feel there may be a conflict of interest. Coleman, have I ever hung out with you one, one-on-one? We ever, other than touring Webster School to give me a better perspective of the project?
No, and you were not alone when you did that.
Thank you. Want to, want to put it out there, I, I am, Coleman is a friendly person, so I, we have a friendly relationship. We are not friends. I would love to be friends with Coleman, but I intend to vote on this to make it very clear, Coleman and I have never actually had a consummated friendship. So...
Just hate that you really put that out there, bruh.
Yeah. It's not, not that...
Order in the chambers.
Now, I, I, I also want to say, I, I hear the deputy mayor's matrix, I think it's a, you know I love data, more than probably most people, maybe other than our council president, Pro Tem, because he is the data guy. But, you know, I think that matrix makes a lot of sense when we're talking about for-profit, when we're talking about people that are coming in and employing a, a, a large number of people. And you use the term "promise," and I want to turn that word on its head and say "promise" in, in this neighborhood. And that investing in the intangibles, the promise, when we say that it doesn't defray the cost of public safety, the promise in, in investing and keeping a community active and engaged, to me, does exactly that. And when we've had public safety conversations, we've talked about youth recreation as being sort of the heart and the center of that conversation, and how can we, you know, divert from all of these horrible violent acts that are happening in our neighborhoods? And I think this is how we start. And, and, yeah, I, I don't know any better way to put it. I, I, I see this very small amount of money that we're being asked, and I, we're not being asked for, we're not writing a check, we're not, that, I want to make, make that very clear. We're not collecting a, a certain portion. The amount that we are collecting is, in a 12-year period, is $200,000 more than we're getting right now. And the obsolete property, the fact that it is an obsolete property, the demolition on this five-acre lot alone, to me, is well above that amount. I can't imagine, out of 200,000, if we were to try to make, or, or anything else happen in this property, that that would be possible with an investment, or, or us outlaying less cash than just that. So where I'm at is, and where my head and heart is, is to go the full 12 years, just thinking about all of the, the benefits and the positives in this project, but I'll put forward that, or if I have the opportunity to put forward that amendment when the time comes.
Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. And I just wanted to say to this community, actually, I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight and supported this particular project. But it's also, a, a coin has two sides. So we also received many people from the other side and not supported this particular project. So I just want to make sure that, that we understand that. As council, it's imperative that we vet these projects, that we be fair in how we administer these projects. Because I heard from the podium many times, people stated that we've been giving out these tax abatements, and people haven't done anything for this particular community. I'm someone that came on to council, and I request the administration to come up with a process to assist us in making good judgment on these particular projects. I also support this project as well. But my concern is, is that to make sure that this project is meeting its goals, that it be some kind of stipulations around this project to make sure that to, to maintain its tax exempt status, is that the project is meeting raising, raising funds goals as this project has stated. I don't believe in giving these projects out, these abatements, unless each organization, it doesn't matter whether you're nonprofit or private, is that they meet in requirements as they, as we give these abatements. So I'm someone that can remove my cap. I love this project, but at the same time, I sit here wanting to make a decision that's fair for this community and every other company that comes forth and asking for abatements.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford, and then Goodman, but I just want to put out there for the record that there's a pretty high legal and very clear legal distinction when it comes to conflict of interest. It's really around financial interest of you or a family member in something. So there, you know, I just want to put that out very clearly, that in a city of 61,000, there will be many times over the years where we are considering items where we know somebody, or that, you know, that we frequent a business, or live on a street, or drive on a street, or will be impacted by those services. But it's about ensuring that when we're on behalf of you, not making decisions where we or a family member could have a financial benefit. And I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford, Councilman Goodman.
So the reason why, I'm glad you brought it up, because I have had a financial benefit with my band performance, so I'm a little, I don't know if I can vote on this or not, because we actually have received funds from Micah Six performing as a personal individual, so that's...
At, at the fundraiser for the gala?
Exactly.
Or for the, the thing?
Yeah, and I don't want any, I have to be truthful, so that's why I'm glad you brought it up, but I did get paid, my band got paid, and so I don't know if I can vote on this or not.
And you did a fantastic job.
Thank you so much. So, I'm asking because that's in your, so that you don't have to make that face, in your code of ethics, because I like clarity, y'all have it in there, so it's not a conflict of interest, y'all say y'all can't get, he wrote that, y'all can't get no money, and since, just like I don't vote for the cannabis industry, because I benefit from the cannabis industry, I don't know if I can vote for this. So that's why I asked the question, so you don't have to shake your head, it's in y'all's code of ethics. Thanks so much.
Mayor Grimald.
I, I haven't looked at the code of ethics since it passed in January, so I, I can't claim to be an authoritative expert on, on council's code of ethics, which applies to council. But I, I would just say that the standard of conflict of interest, I think is important just to publicly, and I appreciate you, President McGinnis, trying to, to lay that out, because, you know, the standard is not, are you friends with somebody, which is a very, and I, I realize that's not what you're saying, Councilwoman, but, but I do just want to emphasize what, what council, what Council President McGinnis is saying. I, I think people might have watched that exchange between Councilman Nicholson and, and Mr. Yocum, and thought, oh, well, if they were friends, there would be a conflict of interest. And that, that's not the standard. The standard is, does someone have a financial interest and, and benefit financially, or get hurt financially based on what happens with this particular vote in front of them? And so, you know, we, we live in a small community where everybody knows one another largely, not, not literally, but that's largely the case. Lots of people are friends with one another. If, if people stop voting on things because they're friends with somebody, we're not going to get any business done up here, just to, just to be clear, because nobody will be able to vote on anything. But to Councilwoman Rutherford's question, the conflict of interest really is, does a council person benefit financially or get hurt financially based on the outcome of this vote? And I, you know, I haven't heard anything so far that suggests that any of the council people, including Councilwoman Rutherford, are benefited or harmed financially based on whether this passes or not tonight.
My property values.
Were, were you hoping to perform at next year's gala?
Maybe. That's why I asked the question, because I don't want it to be perceived that nobody wants to support you. Of course I want to support you, but I also have to do my due diligence, because somebody, somewhere, somehow is going to make this into a big deal, so that's why I put it out there. So I, I like to expose myself, so can't nobody expose me, that's all.
It's important.
You're welcome.
Legislative Council, Sharp, anything further you'd like to elucidate on that? Thank you very much. Speaker's list continues. Councilman Goodman.
I do just want to say to add, to add to it, based on the code of ethics, the, the focus is primarily on immediate family members and people in which you have a direct financial interest in. So whether it be your business, a immediate family member's business, or, sorry, self, immediate family, or a business in which you financially gain from it, that is outside of the, the, the normal channels. So it doesn't necessarily say anything about friends, but however, to your point, there, there is some gray area with that.
We have a question. Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. As I looked at this, and I do appreciate everybody who came, but as Pro Tem Carrington has said, there's certainly, as additionists holds who have had positive things to say, we've received some negative things to say as well. And my question is, can this be delayed until we investigate those further?
There, there can absolutely be a motion to postpone for one week. Is there a motion for that?
Could we do two weeks?
I'm not hearing a motion.
Could we do two weeks? I'm out of town next week?
Mayor Grimald might have an answer for you. Mayor.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I was, and this may be relevant to this, to this question, or how the council wants to move forward. Certainly, and President McGinnis, you know better than me, certainly the council can always postpone something. I, I, you know, as, we, we, as part of the administration, support moving forward and support moving forward tonight, but ultimately, it's, it's council's decision. I do want to bring up that Ms. Phillips, our Economic Development Director, can speak to the question of compliance, at least insofar as there's a development agreement that, that could be put in place. And so Ms. Phillips can speak to that, but I don't know if the timing's right for that or not, but I did just want to let council know that Ms. Phillips can shed some light on this question of compliance, or whether or not there's follow-through with this development.
I'm, I'm comfortable with us proceeding tonight, but I want to give my council the opportunity, if you'd like to postpone for one week. Is there a motion to postpone?
He got a stand. If I make a motion to postpone for one week...
I support that. Okay. So it's a move in a second. Any discussion on postponement?
Yeah, I would like to, some discussion before we postpone. I just want to give the Development Director an opportunity to ask her a few questions.
Okay. I mean, the thing is, that's continuing to the speaker's list.
Right.
So it's, if we postpone for one week, it'll, that can continue at next week's meeting. Any further discussion on postponement for one week?
I, I, just for the, the purpose of the, the speaker not being available for that, for that comment, could it be two weeks?
The motion was made by Councilman Rutherford. Any objection to making it two weeks? So, and does the second object to two weeks instead? Councilman Parker?
No, I don't have a objection.
Okay. So the motion before us is for two weeks. So, any further discussion on postponement? I don't see the, that we will get materially, and new information, so I don't support the postponement, but it's the council's call. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
No.
James?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Three yeas, four nays.
That motion fails, so the motion is now before us, and so, Director Phillips, this would be a good time, Pro Tem Carrington's interested in that further information. When he was speaking, he was referencing ensuring that any decision we make, that there's follow-up from the city and the administration, so this would be a great time to cue that up.
Thank you again. So what we will do is we go forward with a development agreement. And what that is, we just outline and determine like the terms for how we will work together to comply with the, well, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little, anyway, the development agreement will outline the terms of how we will go forward and connect in terms of our, this obsolete property rehab agreement. So some of the things that we'll talk about in the development agreement, we'll look at jobs, we'll make sure that we're stating how many jobs will be provided, the timeframe for the construction, that it will start on time and be completed within a reasonable timeframe. We'll look at some community benefits, that the building permits will be requested and completed within a certain timeframe. And that way, we'll have like a check and balance of, you know, just the timing. We don't want the project to go on indefinitely. And so we'll work with Mr. Coleman Yocum to help, you know, make sure that we're providing permits and inspections in a timely manner.
Okay. Well, I thank you for the information, but I think one of the issues of all these previous abatements that we've given is that it's been no regulation of making sure these projects have funding to continue to have tax abatements.
What we have really done recently is we looked at all of our tax abatement projects, all of our development agreements, and we're looking to see our people, are they in compliance? And so going forward with that, I mean, that's how we're trying to make sure that we're doing things more timely and accurately and efficiently than, I don't want to say that we haven't done that before, but now we're looking at things more succinctly.
Okay. I know we discussed a compliance department. I know when we first came out, we talked about that. And this has always been an issue when it comes to these projects, is that we had no compliance.
With our code enforcement, with our building and safety planning, yes.
Let me speak, because I want to make sure that we've been fair here. Usually, the issue come before you guys, you say we don't have enough staff. So we still haven't added enough staff in your department to actually think about a compliance officer. So for me, I need to see, I need to see language in these particular projects that say, hey, this project, we know that the money is not there right now. We know that, we all in this city want to see this project be successful. But we, at the same time, we want to make sure that every project that come before us has different points that they got to reach, that we can continue to provide these tax abatements to this particular project. That's what I'm saying. So all the things you talked about is the same things that we've been doing previously. So what can you do to ensure that this project continues to move in the right direction that it needs to move into?
With this administration, one thing that we are doing now is we really have more processes in place, just like now we have a metrics, a matrix, and how we're doing our analysis. So we're adhering to processes, timeframes, metrics, to make sure that we're in compliance and also that our projects are in compliance. It is a little bit different than what we have been doing. Sometimes it's not necessarily staff-related, it's just a process relation.
Okay. Well, this is something that the council has definitely requested. So I commend the administration on creating the metrics.
One thing that we could add is we could provide some updates in terms of our projects, you know, for the council, you know, just so you can see the progress.
If I could, this is quite a bit different from, this administration is quite a bit different from past administrations. And certainly, our outlook is very different. And in the past, there have been two problems. One problem is that binding language has not been put into these agreements. So it doesn't do any good to have a development agreement if you say to, and I'm not going to name any company names here, but it doesn't do any good if you say, company X has to strive to hire Pontiac residents or try their hardest to hire Pontiac residents. That doesn't mean anything. And so as we look at drafting development agreements in the future, if, if, and when we choose to offer tax abatements to for-profit, truly for-profit entities, you can be assured that we will be looking at the specific development agreement language and looking at putting in language that is binding and enforceable when it comes to hiring Pontiac residents, when it comes to community benefits, things of that nature. So that's number one. The language matters and leadership matters. It's important that the elected officials, both of the council table and in the mayor's office, actually are focused on putting binding language in there and care about doing so. Secondly, it's important, to your point, Councilman Pro Tem, President Pro Tem Carrington, it's quite a mouthful, the title, but President Pro Tem Carrington, to your point, we've got to actually follow up and enforce that development agreement language. And that's why this review that our administration has just recently commenced of development agreements with an eye towards, is there anything in them that's enforceable and are they actually complying with that is important. But yes, we really do need a compliance person. I don't know that we need an entire compliance department, but we need a compliance person who has expertise in doing that. And so I agree with both of your points, that, you know, it's, in my view, less important, not, not, non-important, but less important in this context where frankly, a lot of the benefits are community benefits by the very nature, the services that will be provided there. But when it comes to for-profit entities, it's essential that we have binding, enforceable language in development agreements and that we actually have somebody at City Hall that's looking at that, measuring compliance and enforcing and standing up to these companies, making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Goodman, then Rutherford, and then Nicholson for the purpose of the amendment he identified.
So, and this is a question, I guess, both for Ms. Phillips or for Mr. Yocum, in regards to the process of restoring a historic building like Webster. Isn't there additional criteria and compliance requirements that you have to meet in regards to redoing the building itself to get the funding and to restore it the way that it should be? So the thing that I'd bring up is, obviously, when we talk about compliance, especially on a city level, it's extremely important. But also, we recognize that for this specific project, not only is there requirements that they have to comply with the city, but there are also state and federal ones as well that you also have to meet to get the funding, correct?
A ton.
So with that, I think that's actually just my question. So thank you.
Councilman Rutherford?
So you said it earlier to the administration that in the past, we have just let things go and they just got any abatement. My question is, what's the, what happens if they don't do it? What's the repercussion? Because what I don't want to happen is that they get the tax abatement, no disrespect to you, Coleman. You get the tax abatement, a year from now, it's not done. Two years from now, the building is not. I just need, for me to feel cool with it, I need something physically in writing for it. And that's what my reservation is, is that we keep saying we're not like the past administration, but it is our due diligence, sorry, not sorry, to ask tough questions. So my real question is, which y'all going to put in writing to make sure he get it done?
Yeah. That's what the development agreement is for, is to put it in writing. That has not been drafted yet. Because there's no development agreement to draft unless and until council approves a tax abatement. So the first question is, does council want to approve a tax abatement? This is true not just for this project, but any project where a tax abatement is proposed. The first question is, does council want to do a tax abatement? Next question is, putting terms and conditions in writing for that tax abatement.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would support something in writing that says maybe it doesn't start until C of L, when we move in. I think that that is possible, that is something we could put in writing.
Say that again, sir.
If we wanted to say that the abatement didn't start until we moved in, until the project was done, as I am counting on it as part of the operating expenses and bringing down our operating costs, if we wanted to put something in writing that it started at certificate of occupancy, I think that that would be okay.
Those terms would be discussed with our city attorney, you know, mutually between our administration and the project manager.
Mayor Grimald?
Now, Councilwoman Rutherford brings up a good point, which is, it's quite possible that the council would say, well, hey, we can't vote on a tax abatement unless we know what those terms and conditions of the development agreement will be. And, you know, certainly, one approach would be for city council to say, hey, we're interested in a tax abatement, but it's conditional upon some future approval of a development agreement that would be brought before council for approval.
Councilman Nicholson was next on the speaker's list. Did you want to make that motion to amend to replace six with 12?
I would. I would like to additionally make the amendment that the, this amendment is subject to the approval of a development agreement as reviewed by the city council.
What we have right now is, it says, for six years beginning after approval of this resolution and upon execution of a development agreement detailing mutual compliance of specified terms and agreement for this certificate. So I think the language might already...
So the trust factor is that administration will bring that before us before the commencement of the, that piece allows for some trust rather than, yeah.
Mayor Grimald's in response.
Well, and, you know, I realize that past mayors maybe weren't eager to have this level of collaboration with council and to actually require verification by council, but I believe that's important. I think, you know, I've preached for a long time now that we have two branches of government, and legislative branch is co-equal to the executive branch. And so I have no problem with the resolution being explicit that this approval is subject to future approval by council of a specific development agreement.
Got it. So I think what Councilman Nicholson's, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I did, that Councilman Nicholson's amendment is replacing that figure of six with 12 and inserting language that says, and upon execution and subject to council approval of a development agreement detailing mutual compliance, et cetera. So that's the amendment, replacing the six with the 12 and adding that that development agreement would come before city council further. Is, so he's made it, is there a second to that amendment? It's been seconded by Rutherford. So now there is discussion on that amendment about whether that's the sentiment of where council wants to go. We did have Councilman Parker and James with a hand. It was on the main motion, but if you'd like to speak now as well, you can have the floor first up.
Well, I agree with the amendments that have been made. I support the project. I do think, though, that this is a community-based project. It is not, I don't see it the same way as you would if you have a business, like when Challenge Manufacturing came to town and we were talking about the, you know, the business agreement with them, with the tax abatements that they received. I don't see this being the same because I do think that there are community benefits here that simply did not exist in that agreement. And so, to a certain extent, you know, we are hopeful as a community to see this community center come into being. That community is hopeful, and not only that community, but our whole city is hopeful about this project. We want to see this happen. And there's tremendous benefit to the community that I don't think your numbers, your dollars and cents can really encompass, you know? So we have to keep that in mind. We have to, you know, we have to understand that there are some things that you just don't, you know, you can't add them up in dollars and cents. But I do think I support the project and I'd like very much to move forward with it.
Thank you. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. Brother Coleman, you know I support the project. Let me be clear, I support the project. But too often, since January 4th, we've stayed here and passed numerous resolutions, only to hear from the community that when they had concerns, all the concerns was not heard. That same thing happened with this resolution as well. We got, as a matter of fact, got some emails today about this thing. And I've just refused to not hear people out anymore.
That's right.
There's been numerous people who've called and said, well, my point wasn't taken, you didn't investigate further. Even regardless where we sit, everybody should have an opportunity to be heard. And I just want, for me, that I have heard everybody, have done my due diligence, to make sure that those who submitted emails or texts or calls, even this afternoon, have been heard on this entire issue. Will it make a difference? I don't know. But they at least deserve the right to be heard, which is why I said, let's delay it for a period of time so that all of those can be heard.
Hey, order, order!
Council has the floor.
They was here in paper. Thank you very much.
Councilman James?
Yeah, that's the point that I want to make. We announced, you know, you legally have to announce these meetings, the public hearings. So if there were people who had legitimate concerns, this is the time, they should have been here to speak. We have not heard one public concern that was in opposition to this project.
We are on the amendment for the 12 instead of six and subject to council approval. Councilman Rutherford?
I'm calling for the vote.
Well, if there's no other discussion on the amendment, speaker's list is exhausted, so I will act like that I didn't hear it. And so speaker's list is exhausted. We're now voting on the amendment itself, not the full motion, the amendment that replaces six with 12 in terms of number of years and inserts and subject to council approval for the development agreement. So that means the development agreement has to come before us for approval. So all clear on what the amendment does? Speaker's list exhausted. Roll call on adoption of this amendment. Clerk Doyle?
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yeses, no nays.
That amendment carries. So we're now at the main resolution, which is the resolution to approve obsolete property rehabilitation or Oprah exemption certificate for Mica Six Community LLC located at 640 West Huron Street. That amendment passed, so that language has been changed. We are now on speaker's list again, those that wish to be recognized on the motion before us as amended.
Okay. I'm confused.
We are at the resolution, the amendment change.
We've already voted to put it off for two weeks, didn't we?
No, it didn't have.
Tabling failed.
Oh, okay, I thought, okay.
No.
So is there any final amendments, discussion, motions to postpone or table? Councilman Rutherford?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. We're voting now to actually say that they get the abatement on upon the conditions that we have set forth in the previous vote, correct?
That's right. It says, the language says...
So could you read it for clarity, please?
Yeah. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pontiac, hereby grant an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for the real property excluding land located in the obsolete property rehabilitation district located at 640 West Huron Street, Pontiac, Michigan, 48341, parcel number 641430453001, for 12 years beginning after approval of this resolution and upon execution of and subject to council approval of a development agreement detailing mutual compliance of specified terms and agreement for this certificate.
Okay.
So that amendment, we just voted on, that change is now in the motion before us.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Any final additional efforts to postpone or amend? I don't want to cut any debate off if there is anything further. All right. Speaker's list having been exhausted, we now move to adoption of the resolution to approve the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for Mica Six Community LLC located at 640 West Huron Street as amended. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. Now, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021-22 to transfer $55,000 from general fund balance GL account 101-000-309-000 to the general fund... General Fund Balance GL account 101-000-309-000 to the General Fund GL account 101-270-818.000, Personnel Services, Other Professional Services, for the Human Resources Contractual Services.
I make the motion?
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. That motion is now before us. This authorizes the posting of a notice. So we're giving the green light to the clerk to publish the notice so that way the community and all of us know that in two weeks' time, we'll actually be considering that budget amendment. This follows up on the action that the council took last week for Human Resources Contractual Services. This is the budget change that reflects that accordingly. Anything further from administration for information?
You summed that up well, President McGinnis. So no, I don't have anything to add.
All right. Any further discussion?
Actually...
Deputy Mayor Stevens does have something to add.
Deputy Mayor.
So the only thing further I would have to add is that council, if you're looking at that number very carefully, you notice that that is a lower number than the number of that was on the actual agreement. The reason for that being, the accounting team looked at the fact that we are starting this contract later than what we would have originally started it, which means that there's a possibility that the work would carry over beyond July 1. And if it carries over beyond July 1, they took a portion of the funds of the entirety of the contract and moved it to the next fiscal year. And so obviously, we're only talking about a week to two weeks beyond that date. So again, the accounting department said you can, for a week to two weeks, they said, you know, it's immaterial to them if council decided to put all of the budget in this fiscal year or break it up. But I wanted to bring it to your attention that the budget had not been amazingly reduced by $20,000. It's just that the accounting department broke it because it was going to break across... The actual work may break across the budget in the fiscal year.
Understood. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list exhausted, we now move to adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of the proposed budget amendment. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021-22 to transfer $136,000 from General Fund Balance GL account 101-000-309-000 to the General Fund GL account 101-201-818.000, Accounting, Other Professional Services, Forensic Audit Services? Move by Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Parker. So now we have before us, similar to what we just did, it's authorizing the clerk to publish the notice so that way we're letting the community, the taxpayers, and all of us know that in two weeks, we'll be acting on the actual budget amendment. And this follows up on the previous work that this council did to approve the forensic audit services firm. Any further information, administration?
This time, I can confidently say that neither the deputy mayor nor I have anything to add here.
Understood. I want to thank the Finance and Personnel Subcommittee that's being very active in the forensic audit sort of running point and ensuring that it's moving very effectively. And for the community's benefit, the forensic audit is well underway and actively happening. Any further discussion on this authorization of the posting of the notice for the budget amendment? Hearing, Councilman Rutherford?
So are we going to do e-blasses to the communities so that people are aware that we're actually discussing the budget because it's going to be a hot topic come May? I'm just asking, can we do, can the administration do more to physically make sure that the community knows that it's actually happening, like not just like Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, letters, notices?
In terms of the budget process in general?
Right. Instead of the budget, because what we don't want to happen is, is that people say they weren't at the table, they didn't understand what was going on, and then we hear the malarkey, "Oh, you guys are not involving the community."
We certainly support getting the word out in any and every possible way. So, you know, if you have some specific suggestions as to how best to do that, we're all ears. Absolutely.
E-blasses.
And there will be many public hearings in terms of the next fiscal year's budget, so I welcome that feedback so that way we can structure it to work better for residents and taxpayers. Any further discussion on the resolution before us? Speaker's list exhausted. We move now its adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of the proposed budget amendment. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a proposed budget amendment for the fiscal year 2021-22 to transfer $30,000 out of the General Fund Fund Balance GL account 101-000-390.000, and $30,000 is transferred to the General Fund Economic Development Department GL account 101-690-818.000, Other Professional Services, to cover contractual services for Baker Tilly?
I make a motion?
Support.
It's been moved by James, seconded by Rutherford. That motion is now before us. We authorized two weeks ago the posting of the notice, so here it is before us now, and it's been previously discussed. Mayor Administration, information for the council and the public.
We already touched on this, but this is another item that's a leftover item or a loose end, if you will, from the previous mayoral administration where by the previous mayoral administration entered into two contracts with two different sets of consultants, each of which was contracted for $65,000 for a total of $130,000, even though the grant dollars were only $100,000 for those two contracts. And so that left invoices totaling $130,000 with only $100,000 available to pay those invoices. So again, this is a reflection on the past administrations entering into contracts beyond what was budgeted by the previous city council and beyond what was funded through grant dollars.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list exhausted, we now are at adoption of the resolution to approve a proposed budget amendment for the fiscal year to transfer $30,000 out of the General Fund Fund Balance GL account to the General Fund Economic Development Department GL account, Other Professional Services, to cover contractual services for Baker Tilly. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
No.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, one no, nay.
That motion carries. We're now at communications from the city council. I want to notify you and remind you that there's citywide community cleanup days happening this week, April 18 through the 23rd. These final signs in the chambers, I hope that some of our neighbors will take those with you tonight for your place of worship, your house, your business, to get that final word out. So please, take those goods. We thank the Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership and many other community organizations for their help in making the cleanup days happen in every part of the city, in many public places and parks and neighborhoods. Any further discussion? Well, it's a communication, so we're announcing it. You've been communicated. Next communication, free landfill days for Pontiac residents, April 23, April 30, May 7, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 575 Collier Road in Pontiac, 48340. More information is available not only in the council packets but on the city's website. Number 14, household hazardous waste collection free for Pontiac residents is April 30 from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Oakland County Service Center complex, 1200 North Telegraph Road in Pontiac. And then the final communication, the Second Chances Expungement Fair for Oakland County convictions is April 30 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at UWM Sports Complex, 867 South Boulevard, Pontiac, Michigan, 48341. Information is available in these chambers, on social media, and in the council packets for that communication item. With that, we are now at public comment. President Protam, William A. Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Quincy Stewart, I believe he left?
He left.
Okay. Mr. Kermit Williams.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This has been a lively meeting. I come today to announce that we are having 11th congressional district debates tomorrow at the Strand Theater. I am officially inviting the city council and the mayor. I think everybody has got a flyer on their desk. So I put one on your desk, Deputy Mayor, but we are going to have Haley Stevens, Congresswoman. We're going to have Congressman Andy Levin also there. And we also have Matthew Dean Otter, which is the Republican, one of the Republican candidates for Congress. It starts at 5:30. Brenda Carter, state representative, has confirmed that she will be there. I am also excited to announce that Kara Bowden, who's running for state Supreme Court, will be there also. So you want to get there early at 5:30. But I have this lovely gentleman standing next to me. Scott Stewart will be one of our moderators from the Pontiac Community Foundation. Let's give a hand to Scott.
[applause]
And then Councilman Mikael Goodman will be another moderator that we will have tomorrow. Let's give a hand for Councilman Goodman. And the final impartial moderator will be Crystal Proximire from Oakland County, 115. So it is going to be lively. So it's Oakland Forward, the Pontiac Community Foundation, and Oakland County, 115 will be moderating. This will be the first congressional debate where the audience will be able to ask questions at the end. So come on out, 5:30 at the Strand. Put your Easter suit back on because it will be valet parking. So come dressed to the nines and come on out tomorrow at 5:30. It's absolutely free 99 at the Strand Theater, which is 12 North Saginaw. And thank you and have a good evening.
Pastor Kathy?
I just wanted to take a second to thank Jeremy and the kids at the high school and middle school that are involved with the robotics team. They did really, really well, and we should be congratulating them and cheering them on for next year.
Ms. Darlene Clark?
I just want to have a question for the council and for the mayor, please. You did vote for Webster, and I agree with you, there's a great need in the city of Pontiac for community centers. But my question and my confusion is that Pontiac has a lot of empty school buildings. And I kind of want to know, is this going to lead, by you voting on the Webster project, is this going to lead to other investors to come in behind him and use that same format to get money or get anything from the city? And my problem is that these investors bought these schools, and these schools sat on the community, within the community, empty for so long, and they didn't even put emphasis in doing anything to even open the buildings up. They were all shut down. So my question is, again, if Jefferson Junior High School, Emerson, Harrington, Franklin, Whittier, if all those investors come in with the same format, will you approve that as well?
Thank you. Mr. Andre Jones?
One more. Somebody left their phone up here. I want to know what is the procedure of these businesses that don't take care of their property, where they got trash, they have rodents coming through there? What is the...
Put the mic up, Dr. Can't anybody hear you?
What is the procedures on these businesses? Because for years, they haven't been accountable for taking care of their property. Like, what's going to change now?
Good question. Is it Avery Caffran? Please pronounce your name for me. Caffian, okay. Thank you.
I'm actually here today for my government class as part of an assignment, but I decided for the topic that I would talk about the sidewalks in Pontiac since I would really like to see them get fixed. I am 18, and as long as I can remember, they have been very bad, very just not great. It would be really nice to see them improved upon and even just other cleanup around the neighborhood, you know?
Thank you.
Round of applause for Avery. Thank you for being here tonight.
No, angry. Thank you.
Larry Jasper seems he's left as well, all right. President McGinnis, that concludes our public comment.
All right. We are now at closing comments. Mayor Tim Grimald, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Just to try to answer and acknowledge some of the public comments that were made, in terms of whether the tax abatement for the Webster project creates a precedent for other projects, especially involving schools, I think that hinges on all the factors that we've talked about. You know, at the outset of my comments tonight, I talked about the fact that the redevelopment project is community-oriented, that they're actually going to be providing community services, that it will be functioning as a community center. I also talked about the fact that it's preserving the historic character of the school, that it's not tearing down the school, it's not heavily modifying the school, it's actually restoring the school. We talked extensively about the job creation and the decent pay of employees who will be working there. So I frankly doubt that many, if any, of the other school owners are likely to follow in that path. This is a pretty exceptional project that MICA 6 is endeavoring to implement, and so that's why our administration recommended providing an Oprah for the Webster project is because of a number of those criteria. So of course, if other projects meet those criteria, we'll take a look at it, and we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. In terms of some of the other questions that were asked, and I'll group a couple of them together, businesses that don't take care of their property, we also got a question or maybe more of a statement or a public comment about the importance of cleaning up neighborhoods. Those really go hand in hand. I mean, if you look at most of the blight in our neighborhoods, it's either businesses, it's commercial establishments, or it's rental housing and slum lords. And we have an enormous backlog of code enforcement that has gone undone. And so there are really a couple of things that our administration is focused on and that you'll see with the upcoming budget proposal. Number one, we need to overhaul some of the structure of departments to make sure that code enforcement is handled appropriately, that it's the focus of a department that is focused on code enforcement, on rental unit enforcement. Very strangely, rental unit enforcement is under a totally different division than code enforcement, which is focused on outdoor enforcement. But code enforcement and rental unit enforcement are in totally different divisions. So there's not a division charged with addressing blight and slum lords. So that's one issue in terms of just the structure of departments and making sure that we have leadership of a department or a division that's really focused on cracking down on blight. Secondly, we need more code enforcement officers out there. And we have enormous backlogs, like I talked about. We are starting to pursue grant funding so that we can really flood the city with code enforcement officers, at least over the coming couple of years, to try to catch up on this backlog and try to send a clear message that we're not going to tolerate being Oakland County's dumping ground anymore. And then third comment that was made is in regard to sidewalks, and it's very important, especially as we seek to be a pedestrian-friendly community. You know, right now, we have a lot of people who walk in the streets because the sidewalks are in really bad shape. The good news is, and this isn't something that any of us up here, including me, can take credit for, but the good news is that the last city council did appropriate a large amount of community development block grant dollars to improving sidewalks. And so we're going to start to see some of the fruit of that investment in the next year here as we get to work at an accelerating rate fixing sidewalks because it is really important. Now, we have enormous sidewalk needs, so it's not like flipping a light switch and in the first year, everything's fixed and hunky-dory. But you will continue to see work and improvement done on sidewalks, and it's a high priority for our... and it's a high priority for our administration, I know for City Council as well.
Thank you. Clerk Garland Doyle, your closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind the citizens that the city of Pontiac will hold a special election two weeks from today, on May 3, to elect charter commissioners. The charter, the governing document for the city of Pontiac, is our city constitution. In August of 2021, Pontiac voters approved a proposal to establish a charter commission to revise the city charter that was created in 1982. We will be electing nine charter commissioners. You can choose to vote by absentee ballot now through May 2 at 4:00 p.m. If you have your absentee ballot before then, it can be turned in all the way until 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. Or you can vote at your assigned polling location on Election Day, May 3, between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And then in addition to that, if you're interested in running for precinct delegate, the filing deadline, deadline to be a precinct delegate is also May 3. It's May 3 at 4:00 p.m. And to run, all candidates for precinct delegate must file a notarized precinct delegate affidavit of identity. Petition signatures are not required, and you will actually file at Oakland County Elections Division, that's 1200 North Telegraph Road, at the Department of Elections, by 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 3. Thank you.
Thank you. And to accompany the clerk's announcement, because that day, it's a Tuesday, because it's an election day, the City Council schedule for that week, we will not be meeting on a Tuesday. It will be on the Thursday of that week, which is May 5, which coincidentally is the National Day of Prayer. So that will be acknowledged at that evening's council meeting. Or I should say, is it evening or afternoon? Okay, phew, I didn't want to go out on a limb there. So on Thursday, May 5 at 6:00 p.m., that's the council meeting, so that way we're not conflicting with citizens, being able to, not only the city to conduct the election, but citizens to participate. So that will be reflected for that week, which is also the birthday week of Councilman Melanie Rutherford, District 1. Your closing comments, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Let's try it again. Good evening. All right, we're going to fake it till we make it. Getting in good trouble is necessary. Good trouble helps redeem the souls of America. That was said by John, the late, great John Lewis. There was a season in Pontiac where folks make Facebook posts, and they tend to act like they're getting in good trouble. But when the work came, there was no good trouble at all. There's actions that we have to do that cannot be seen as hollow or empty. It must be seen with real action. Tonight, you saw that display. You saw people have their opinions. You saw the passion. And at the end of the day, you saw us come together for the betterment of the people, not the betterment of ourselves. I say that to inspire you, that you should ask us to get in good trouble. We should ask good questions so that we can be in good trouble. I say ask every day if you want to see good trouble. But what you cannot do is bully, manipulate, and/or try to make it seem like we're not doing our due diligence, because that's what we do, because we love good trouble. The second part of this is this. On April the 25th, there will be a housing symphony. I happen to have the pleasure and the honor of sitting as the Vice President for the Housing Commission. It's going to be at the United Wholesale Mortgage. And if you want to get in some good trouble and ask some homeowners why you want rents, people who have Section 8, I employ you to get there, because it's going to be good trouble. On April the 30th, we're going to have an opportunity for people who are trying to get second-class citizens to get back involved, so they can get in some, what? Good trouble. And so we ask that you come to the United Wholesale Mortgage, so we all can be in good trouble. And the reason why I say that is simple. It's one thing to make a post, it's another thing to make something happen. And that's what we do, make something happen. Have a great evening.
Thank you. District 2's Councilman Brett Nicholson, your closing comments.
So this last week has probably been the best week I've had as a councilperson. Just a lot of really awesome things moving forward, and it's very exciting. Went and did, over the last few weeks, an audit of all of the streets in District 2. Turned in about 300 different light items of things that needed to be addressed, street signs, street lights, easement issues, you name it, we had it. And I say "had" because a lot of it is already being addressed. I sent that email out, and within hours, I had responses from department directors telling me what their plan was to make sure that those, all of those things were addressed. And those answers were, "Street signs have been ordered. They take two weeks to come in. They'll be, take two weeks to be installed." So, or the next three to four weeks in District 2, see a sea change of things that are going to be how they should be, which, you know, goes unsung, right? When things are how they should be, nobody really notices them. But I'm excited to see those things get done, because I certainly will notice them. Want to put neighbors on notice in District 2. When we have some blighted properties, the answer is not to dump your garbage on the blighted property and then call code enforcement. Your garbage contains mail with your address on it. You're on Ring Video Doorbells all over this city. So as I've informed many of those people who have told me, "I just saw my neighbor dumping trash over the fence," we have a very active code enforcement department that is very interested in pursuing those situations, and we will definitely make sure that those are pursued. We have our District 2 Community Advisory Group meeting on Monday at 7:00 at Goldner Walsh. We'll be hearing from a majority of our charter commission candidates, so please be there. So you can, one, get a good overview of what the charter commission is and does, but then, two, to hear from each one of them about their vision for how they can be supportive of that process.
Thank you. District 3's Councilperson, Mikhail Goodman, closing comments.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Again, I will try to keep it relatively short and to the point. First of all, with District 3, I hope that those who live in my district or don't, and just want to help out, come to the cleanup in District 3 on the 23rd. We will be meeting at North Kiwanis Park, and we will be cleaning the area that is the park itself, and the area near Sarasota and Pensacola. And I always get it mixed up, because those are a lot of Florida names in one little area.
Orlando's over there, too, right?
So I used to live in Orlando, if you didn't know that. So, but if you can get involved with that cleanup, that'd be amazing, especially with the amount of trash and then dumping that is in that corridor by Sarasota and Pensacola. It'd be really helpful to get some people, in addition to the volunteers that are coming out, to help out with that. Another really important thing I actually want to bring as information from the county is that the last County Commission meeting, they passed, I believe, multiple resolutions to improve housing in the county. And of course, being the city of Pontiac, being the county seat, and having some of those needs, a lot of that funding goes in regards to us. So that, of course, includes money for more attainable housing, so not just affordable housing, but that mid-tier to get people who can afford, again, essentially attainable, affordable housing for them off of low-income housing, to create low-income housing for people who actually need it. And then also additionally, funding for more permanent beds in Oakland County in terms of shelters. And again, there are, well, there's one in my district, so obviously some of that funding goes towards my district as well as other shelters in the county, to provide more permanent beds for people who lack homes. That way, to create a more stable situation for them to, obviously, hopefully, not need those same beds in the future. But with that, oh, and also to reaffirm a point that was made, an announcement, there is a debate tomorrow at the Strand, which is 12th North Saginaw, between Congresswoman Haley, Congressman Andy Levin and Congresswoman Haley Stevens at the Strand, doors open at 5:30. It will end tentatively around 8:00. Obviously, having the care that I do for my community, I think it's really important for everyone to be involved civically and to hear from the people who, just based off of how Michigan politics works, will be there for the next 10 to 15 years. So making sure that our community is really involved, and making sure that we are aware of the people who we are electing, as many of us sit up here today, making sure that the community has the opportunity to hear from the people who want the power. So with that, I will close my remarks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kathleen James, representing District 4, your closing comments.
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of comments that I want to make. First of all, we're in the midst of our citywide cleanup, and District 4 will be cleaning Cherry Lawn Park on tomorrow, starting at 9:00. We do have GM volunteers who will be working with us, but if you live in the neighborhood, if you live in that community, we're still looking for volunteers. If you want to join us, meet us at the park at 9:00 a.m. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate with us, and we'll have a good day. Also want to mention the NOHAS. As you know, Pontiac has an agreement with Oakland County. We are part of the NOHAS program. And the first NOHAS date for 2022 is Saturday, April 30. And the time is 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I just want to mention that a lot of people may not be aware that that is a really easy process. If you do have, like, paint cans in your garage that you just have not figured out, you just have stuff that you haven't figured out how you need to get rid of, solvents and that kind of thing. You can't take them out to this collection. They do not, you do not have to get out of your car. It's a drive-through process. It's really a seamless process. If you've never been out there, just go out to Oakland County, get in line, and you go from stage to stage, and they will take, each stage will take whatever hazardous material that that particular station takes. And you just drive through each station until you're all, you know, clear of what you took out there. So really, an easy process. If anybody has never tried it, it's free to Pontiac residents, so please take advantage of it, if you've got stuff in your garage that you really need to get rid of. Also, the dumpster for District 4 will be placed in the Oakland Hope Parking Lot. They've got a huge parking lot there facing Walton Boulevard. It will be on the side, on the CBS end, across from the Burger King. It will be in place on Friday, which is Earth Day, and it will be there throughout the weekend. So any one from District 4 that has something that they would like to get rid of, please bring it to that dumpster on Friday. It'll also be there on Saturday and Sunday. That's all I've got. Have a great day.
Thank you. Councilman William Parker Jr., representing District 5.
Thank you, Brother President. And good afternoon, Pontiac and District 5. Just want to remind everybody that tomorrow at 1:00 p.m., that Mr. Tim Travis and Gardner Walsh and the Rotary Club will be planting trees over in Galloway Park, looking for volunteers to come help that set. Galloway Park tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. and a tree planting process. Also, on April 23, from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., we'll be doing our citywide and park cleanup. Please come and help us clean up Galloway Park and some of the streets adjacent to that. There would be tools and a dumpster that would be there. But please, if you have some particular tools you want to work, if you don't like using everybody's tools, please come out and help us clean up the park, as well as our surrounding district. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Councilman William A. Carrington of District 6, the President pro temp of the council, your closing comments, sir.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. Good evening, everyone. This will be pretty quick. First, I'd like to thank Pastor Cornelius and Cassandra Berry for hosting the 6-District Community Meeting last week. Certainly appreciate you guys offering your beautiful space. Also, I'd like to thank Congressman Andy Levin, State Rep. Brenda Carter, and our Mayor Tim Grimaldi for stopping by at a particular community meeting. The residents really enjoyed everyone stopping by and listening to their concerns. As the prior, as the previous council people have actually stated concerning the weekly cleanup, we actually started today in the 6th District. I'd just like to thank the Amazon volunteers for actually going out to Baldwin Park earlier today to plant trees in that particular park. They was planning to clean the park up as well, but of course, it was hard to see bottles and cans when it was covered with snow, but they did continue to plant those trees. This Friday, and I'm asking the residents, we do have some corporate volunteers, but please come out of your homes and assist in this cleanup. Friday, you can meet with the GM Housing Neighborhood Association. They have a meeting at Oakland Park around 10:00 a.m. to plant trees, as well as clean up Oakland Park. And we still probably send some volunteers over to Perry Park as well for that cleanup. Saturday, myself and We Care Neighborhood Association will be at Charlie Harrison Park. We're redoing that playscape with a new mulch, as well as cleaning that park up. We have to help those that come into this city. We have to help citizens of the city of Pontiac. Usually, I try not to use volunteers for outside. I'd rather have those that stay in these particular neighborhoods invest in their own neighborhoods, because it creates pride in our city. And if the residents love their neighborhood, then we ain't never got to worry about no blight, right? And that's really what we seeing is that we have to get back to loving each block in our own neighborhoods. And that's where I'm at, and that's why I stay committed to this. I know it's a lot of people in this city that's committed to the process. So we, as a community, got to be committed to the process. Last thing, please remember, if you have any returning citizens, that expungence fair is critical to them being successful in their future. The research says that when you convicted of a felony, you will work, you actually, you will be less 10 times as much as someone without a felony. You won't have that particular income on your work life. For example, if I commit a felony, a person that doesn't have a felony will make 10 times more income per their lifespan than I will. It's imperative. They have given, they've given this out. If you have up to three felonies and unlimited misdemeanors, you know, some major ones you won't be able to get off, but all those in between, you can get rid of. You just got to go through the process. And people call me, I give them the information, but you have to follow the process. It definitely will benefit you in the long run to get these felonies and misdemeanors off your record. And saying that, good night.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike McGinnis, District 7's councilperson. Want to share that the men of Omega Psi Phi fraternity are holding an online event for young men in grades 9 through 12, to speak with the young men on encountering law enforcement and law enforcement interactions. It's a Zoom presentation, and it's on Thursday, April 21 at 7:30 p.m. Please share that information with your network and neighbors that may be able to participate in that. Again, targeting and focused for young men, grades 9 through 12. And if you want to reach out and get that Zoom link, we can provide that. Want to congratulate Central Multicultural La Familia on their milestone anniversary. I know that the mayor spoke at their open house celebration yesterday, and I was able to attend as well. A very important landmark and pillar in our community, and we are grateful for their partnership with the city and our residents. Oakland County residents can get a free rabies vaccine for their canine, a dog, with the purchase of a dog license at the Oakland County Animal Shelter and Pet Adoption Center, which is at 1200 North Telegraph in Pontiac, every Tuesday in April. So one more Tuesday left, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. No appointment is necessary. Again, that's the remaining final Tuesday in April, 9 to 11:30 a.m. Habitat for Humanity Oakland County is offering assistance with exterior home repairs for many neighborhoods in Pontiac's District 7. If you're a District 7 homeowner, you may be eligible, or renter, I believe, you may be eligible for help with landscape cleanup, lawn mowing, raking, gutter cleaning, gutter repair, exterior home cleaning, exterior home power washing, wood porch repair, wood steps repair, wood fence repair, exterior home painting, and a home energy audit. All projects are subject to assessment. You can apply online at habitatoakland.org, or call 248-338-1843 to find out more. Again, for Habitat for Humanity Oakland County and their assistance with exterior home repairs for many neighborhoods in Pontiac's District 7, that phone number is 248-338-1843, and the website is habitatoakland.org. And if you have a repair that goes beyond those projects I named, they also have a Critical Home Repair Program. Their website and that phone number can also give you more information about the Critical Home Repair Program. Look forward to seeing all of our District 7 neighbors at the cleanups in not only your streets, but we want to activate all corners of our district and our city. And then the group effort is at Murphy Park, starting at 11:00 on Friday, April 22. Also that same day, starting at 9:00 and 1:30, are cleanups that are launching from Pontiac City Hall's parking lot. It's going to tackle some of Auburn, and the Woodward Loop, and Pike, and Paddock, because we know that the wind does a real number, the weather, but also just a lot of the traffic that drives by. We get a lot of debris in the major corridors on that side of District 7. So with that, thank you all for your time and really believing in... So with that, thank you all for your time and really believing in Pontiac's future, investing your time into the decisions tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. Roll call, assuming there's no debate, on the roll call for adjournment, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:27 p.m.
Boy.
You bet.
I wouldn't say anything here that I wouldn't say to them. But thank you.